First thing, I wanted to make sure all the commissioners, we did get a note to make sure we speak into the mic. So whenever you're making a motion or saying anything, just make sure you've got it close. It's hard for everyone to hear, so let's make sure of that. Robin, can you, before we adopt the agenda, would you, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, 119 Third Avenue South, which is under violations, is deferred. 412 Broadway, 1322 Sixth Avenue North, all under violations are deferred. And we will not have commissioner training today. We'll look at that next month. But I did pass around some information that might help those of you who are not architects and designers, just with what different lines on plans mean and that type of thing. And I believe that is everything for the agenda.
Do you need to put those three together?
Sure. 119 Third Avenue South, which is G.I., 412 Broadway, J. 1322 Sixth Avenue North.
And under ex commissioner training?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. First, do we have any council members that would like to speak before the meeting, understanding your time? Okay, seeing none. Do you have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, motion carries. So first, second, first agenda, but let me do this first. Public hearing, for each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal, and we ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes, unless they're representing an organization or group, and they may have five minutes. And you'll see the little timer that'll indicate when your time is running out. And for the applicants, just think about eight minutes, and then two minutes at the end for your rebuttal. For appeals, pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeals filed are in a timely manner and that all procedure requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the historic zoning commission. So now we're on the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. First...
Sorry, I believe the first item on the agenda should be A, which is the settlement that we discussed last meeting regarding the ATM. So if the... This is Richland, though, that she's about to do, right?
The first one, if there's the settlement.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry. Continue.
Okay. So the first item on consent is the settlement of the First Farmers Emergence Bank versus Metropolitan Government and Metro Historic Zoning Commission, Davidson County, Chancery Number 16-1220-I. Then we have 3609 Richland Avenue, this one's new construction of infill in an outbuilding. 3610 Richland Avenue, also new construction, infill in an outbuilding. 919 Walcurch Avenue, new construction with an addition setback determination. And 1612 Sumner Avenue, new construction of an addition. Staff has reviewed all of these and find them to meet the design guidelines.
Okay. We have one person. Could you, I guess, the actual...
Yes, I would like to remove 919 Walcurch from the consent agenda.
919 Walcurch, okay, thank you. All right. Any commissioners, do you have any, you're okay with any questions about any of these?
The consent agenda was on D.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I oppose.
I'll oppose.
Who was that second? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that down to the actions. So is that sound okay? Okay, so I'm gonna certainly move the 919 Walcurch Avenue down to item eight on the Metro Zoning Commission actions.
It'll be the first one?
Yeah, it'll be the first one on the actions. So first, we're overlay recommendations and design guideline options, adoptions for Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
This, the revision of design guidelines for Germantown actually began with staff. We were hoping for some, a better architectural resource survey than the one, than the very sort of simple one that we had to help with decision-making. And it was clear that there are some things that have come up in the last few years that none of us just really ever expected back in the day when the guidelines were first created. So we approached the neighborhood about doing those two projects, and what they did was they had a volunteer, Michael Emmerich, an architect, who volunteered to conduct the architectural resource survey for us. And then they put together a committee that worked with staff on revision of the guidelines. The draft was placed on the website on June 10th. Since that time, some additional changes have been made, and those are noted in the appendix of your staff report. The revised draft was posted on the website on August 31st of this year, and there's been a few little changes even since then. Most of those are just typos and things like that, so I didn't give you a rundown of all of those, since they're not changing the rules. Because the guidelines are organized differently than before, it really isn't possible to give a line-by-line overview of all the changes. Your staff report provides a summary of some of the major changes. There's more guidance for materials for new construction, guidance for parking areas, sidewalk cafes, plazas, appurtenances, rooftop decks, outbuildings, and signage. The main change is that the new construction section cuts the district into more zones than what it had before. Before, it looked at the National Register District and those areas outside of the district. And so now there's more zones, because I think all of you realize that Germantown is very, very eclectic, not throughout, but you know, Jefferson is much different than the interior of the neighborhood, Rosa Parks is much different than the interior. So we wanted to be able to address that better and give better guidance to applicants. The design guidelines meet the National Park Service's Secretary of Interior Standards. That hasn't changed. So it meets Section 17.40.410B of the ordinance. This meeting constitutes the ordinance' public hearing requirement. Staff recommends adoption of the revised Germantown Historic Preservation Design Guidelines with one new condition that the neighborhood requested, that a maximum height of 55 feet be spelled out for five-story buildings on Jefferson and Rosa Parks, to add that to the guidelines. Staff finds the proposal meets Section 17.40.410B of the ordinance. And I believe there's at least one member of that committee here to tell you about the process and the change. Any questions for me?
Okay, thanks, Robin. Any other, anything? Okay. With, so I guess you're kind of the applicant. Would the person on the committee like to come forward first and speak? No? Okay. Okay. Open public hearing. Anyone that'd like to speak regarding this overlay, if guidelines, you please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Gabrielle Hansen with Williamson Real Estate. I represent the St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church on Sixth Avenue North. My address is 5085 Donovan in Franklin, Tennessee. We have a very serious problem with this new design overlay, and the number-one thing is this has been a very exclusionary committee. No one that we've spoken to was ever contacted in regards to this. There were no public postings or mailers done to any of them to even be notified about this. It wasn't until I was doing some serious research, because this church happens to be in that zone and for sale, that this was randomly discovered almost too late. We feel that it's somewhat amazing that Ground Zero is an African-American church, and we feel that this could hinder further race relations in this community. And we also feel that it needs to encompass all of Germantown or none of Germantown, because it seems to be very directive towards this one particular zone. There's no exclusion for the commercial properties or for not-for-profit. This is creating a tremendous financial hardship for my client, whose property is presently for sale. The ship has already left the dock in Germantown. There's already other construction. There's also a state statute, Title 13, Public Housing and Planning, Chapter 7, that says that historic zoning is actually intended to encourage rehabilitation and new construction and development that will be harmonious. This ordinance seeks to pretty much halt all development and all new construction and conform into a tiny box that is very prohibitive, that doesn't make sense for most property owners, and goes against the grain of the freedom of owning property in the United States of America. We don't want to create a problem, but we're not the only ones that are against this. And we have spoken to the NAACP, and we will have representation should this go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner's staff. First of all, my name is Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio. We represent the developers and owners of the Worthing Bag complex. We're beginning their, leading their design efforts on their next phase of development. First of all, I want to say a tremendous thanks to the tremendous effort that was put in place by the Development Committee, the neighborhood, and staff to pull this together. We are in 100% support of the guidelines as presented, with one exception, which I want to bring up for discussion today. We've been working diligently since last March on updating the master plan for the Taylor Place development. Because of the new Worthing facility has declared bankruptcy, it has expedited the development timeline for this project. Originally, it was going to wait to a later date, once the Worthing complex lease ceased to exist, but since they went bankrupt, it accelerated that timeline. So we've been working on this master plan. During this time, the applicant has come forward with some changes for the guidelines, and we have worked, had multiple meetings with neighborhood and staff regarding the guidelines, looking at our site, looking at the context, working together to really understand the intent, and working through some of the potential issues and some of the potential enhancements that may be done to the guidelines to make them better. One thing, in the course of all that, the back and forth, we've had just a great relationship with both staff and the neighborhood, but in the last two weeks, there was one addition to the guidelines that gave us a small bit of concern. And we've today come to present perhaps some language that could provide this body some flexibility in interpreting it. The rule in question for today is the rule that states that all façades shall be at least 80% brick. It goes to further state that appropriate accent materials may be used for the remainder, that a greater percentage of accent materials may be used on façades that are not visible from a public right-of-way. Our real concern here isn't the intent of the language. We think it's good. For most homes and townhomes and smaller-scale development, it seems like the history and the context of Germantown is extremely appropriate. For the Worthing site, it is extremely unique. There's not another site like it, given its industrial nature and the large vacant properties that are remaining in Germantown. This is one of the only. And so we think that the application of 80% ruling on this site could be potentially damaging to the property's development. And really, the biggest concern is the word "shall." "Shall be 80%" is very absolute, and there's no room for flexibility there. And we think that may be appropriate for the remainder of the district, but that perhaps in the Worthing zone, sorry, let me finish my thought, perhaps in the Worthing zone itself, we could consider some additional language that would provide flexibility for just that zone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Sonya Link. I'm on the Development Committee, and I'm also on the committee that helped redesign the guidelines, and also on the board. So first, let me address the request for the materials for the Worthing property. You know, historically, there's been a lot of brick in Germantown, and that's why we're asking for the material of brick to be used mainly. For the Worthing property, you know, as long as the owners and developers will commit to working with the neighborhood and the board and the Development Committee on the design, then I think we're okay with putting in some language that could possibly allow more accent material for that. For the other issue that came up first, I think that was for St. Mark's Church. Is that what that was? St. Mark's? Okay. The guidelines were basically not changed for anything in the historic overlay. So I'm not sure what the concern is. I think it was implied that the guidelines would radically change for this, but it was not. So if you look in the document, you can see the type of construction or development that's allowed in the historic overlay, and it definitely says civic and commercial. So along with homes and everything else. So if there's any questions on that, I could be, I'll be glad to answer any further and provide any more detail.
Okay, thank you. Did you, back in the back, did you want to speak, sir? No? Yeah, please come forward and state your, state your name and address.
My name's William Hollings. I live at 1237 Sixth Avenue North, which is almost across the street from St. Mark's. And I would like to correct two things that was made in the presentation. One, there were at least two neighborhood meetings that were open to everyone in the neighborhood about the design guidelines. Secondly, notices were sent out to every mailing address. I got one. I don't know why it wouldn't have been delivered across the street. And peripherally, the other issue with St. Mark's that hasn't been mentioned is the St. Mark's Church and the two lots that are their parking lot are zoned industrial now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else would like to come forward? Any, any other residents that would like to speak regarding this overlay? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. So was the councilman involved, Robin?
He was not directly involved, but he was certainly kept apprised of the process.
Okay. Do you think it, since we had it, we should get him in, him, that's what I'm talking about?
He was invited to, and he said he fully supports it, but he, he did not choose to take part in the actual committee meetings or neighborhood meetings.
Okay. I would say, the person brought up that it's, I don't know if I wrote it out or not, prohibitive, typically, it's not going to be, like what was pointed out, that it's not going to prohibit new, new, new design or new development. That's not how they typically are. But, but in light of this, and I wonder if we ought to look for a deferral and get to the, you know, councilman, and if we need to, just to make sure we have any other people that want to talk, discuss it, but...
Again, he has been involved to the extent that he wanted to be, and he did say he's fully supportive. I don't know that, I don't know what else he would do at this point if we deferred for, for that reason. I mean, he's, it was his choice not to attend those committee meetings. He's got a lot of other things to do, but he said he was fully supportive of it.
Okay, okay.
Is it, is it true that, that the modifications would not affect their development or sale of the building? Number one, they mentioned that it's been zoned industrial. They could come back and change that zoning, but it would have to fall within the guidelines and the development of that. But it's not, I mean, changes that we've made have not restricted anything unusual for that location.
Right, you're absolutely, no, you're absolutely right. The use zoning, the use of every single property, that doesn't change. The process doesn't change. It does affect development in the sense that you do review design, and so there's, there are the whole set of design guides that already exist.
Yeah, I mean, that hasn't changed.
That, yes, their underlying zoning will not change.
Okay. So we're not, we're not discussing any changes that are going to affect them that haven't been in effect before?
Well, I mean, this is a revision. I'm sure there are details that they may feel affect them. I'm not going to try to answer for them, but it doesn't affect the zoning of their property. It does not affect how the property is zoned.
Or affect what they could, I mean, that they could sell?
It doesn't affect selling or buying property in any way, never has, never will, yes.
And I, I did make up the point about the person, about the "shall be 80%," and I wonder if, if there is some other language that we might want to still work through, or...
One suggestion was that under facade materials, this sentence could be added. A greater percentage of accent materials may be appropriate to create a more varied and appropriately neighborhood-scaled building facade and massing within the Worthing complex development zone. Might even be able to extend that to, say, Rosa Parks, because Rosa Parks, those buildings are oriented, obviously, to Rosa Parks, which is outside of the neighborhood. It's really almost the rear of those buildings that affect the neighborhood more than the front. So just a thought.
Yeah, that might be, you know, something a little bit easier to, to work with, too, and not walk around measuring the 80%. And I don't know if there's any other, you know, other statements or things, now that it's been brought to our attention.
I mean, I think, I'm not real comfortable saying that we would leave that up to the neighborhood associations or the design, for them to determine. I think, I think it's our staff and the guidelines that we have to go by to determine. So I think we need to be very specific on however we do that, so that we, that applicants know going in what they need to be expected, and that our staff knows what to approve and what not to approve.
That makes sense.
What can be acceptable.
Yeah, that makes sense. But I think the language that Robin noted, though, would work good with just that specific one, the 80%. I feel like it would be, but, you know, I'd be interested if any other commissioners, but you keep going, Ann.
Well, well, are there other zones that, that are similar to that, that we need, that might come forward and say, I mean, we want that, that situation as well? Or to be waived?
I think the only two where it would be appropriate would be Worthing and Rosa Parks.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any comments, Manay?
This is the proposed, possibly the proposed change, and that's the proposed change issued.
If it was deferred, I guess, once to make sure we list everybody, I don't know, is there any, does it mess up with any getting, because they will have another opportunity in council, I guess, to approve these, or, oh, this one's...
No, this stops with you. This isn't a brand-new overlay, which would go to council. It's just design guidelines, so it's just you. I think that, I don't, I think I'm speaking correctly for the neighborhood, that they are anxious. It's been deferred once, and they're anxious to get this in line for new projects.
Okay.
But, you know, again, whatever you think is best.
I sort of feel you're anxious about making sure that we have everybody's concerns covered. I think if we were, you know, like, to defer it, that we need to give the staff some guidelines as to what we expect to come back to us.
Well...
I mean, I think we could, we could make that revision to that verbiage.
Yeah, we can do that one.
But, you know...
I will say, the reason why I asked again for actual residents was, you know, because the people that were, did speak, were not, they were representing different groups, not necessarily the residents. That's one reason why I brought that up. But I would, you know, well, let me ask you this one more thing, Robin. Was it pretty well-attended? I'm not going to ask you to do a poll to say it was 50% or whatever, but did you feel...
We did have a, a meeting once we had a pretty strong draft. The committee hosted a meeting. It wasn't terribly well-attended, but notice did go out to everybody. And then, of course, this was on the agenda last month, and a mailed notice was sent to every property owner for that meeting.
When those mailings go out, and it is to a facility like the church, who receives that? I mean, it obviously goes to the mailing address, but I'm just wondering who gets that and who reacts to it? We don't know.
Right, we have no idea. It goes to whatever address is given to, that they give to the property assessor. That's how all of Metro sends notices. So sometimes people don't revise the mailing address and who it should go to. I'm not saying that's the case here, but I do encourage people to make sure that address is correct, so they're getting all Metro notices.
The only thing I've been dealing with now, sometimes it's just the education of what we do, and it's like, people think, oh, they're, here they go, they're going to just tell us what we can do, and that's not what, this is not what we do. It's not a, this is a tool. It's not a prohibitive, and, you know, so I almost, that's the only reason why I'm kind of being anxious with it, because I'd, I'd almost feel like if, if they understood, it would be, like you said, it's just a, you know, something that's already out there, and much of the Germantown has, has overlay on it as well. Is it just a, I just want to make sure, you know, that's all. We're putting these guidelines, and do you mind if I call the committee person up one more time? And the person on committee, do you, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Sonya Link.
Sonya Link? Sonya Link? Please come forward. Now, if you would, I just want to ask you one more time about the process, and I just want to feel comfortable. And Sonya, if you'll just give your name and address one more time. And the question is, I just want to ask about the community involvement and with your committee, and was it, you know, because, I mean, and generally, I'm, I'm always definitely positive for these, but I just want to make sure that the education gets around and people are not just saying, here goes Historic Commission making us do something. I understand this is a great tool for them and a great tool for the neighborhood.
Sonya Link, 1308 Sixth Avenue. The committee did everything we could possibly do to communicate it to the neighborhood. We had regular development committee meetings where we discussed it. We had standalone meetings for the guidelines to come up with the revisions. And basically, the reason we wanted to revise the guidelines is because of type of development that's been happening in Germantown. A lot of the new massive buildings, after we've seen them be built, we do not, we think they're changing the character of the neighborhood. So we want also some of the new townhomes that are being built, the neighborhood has felt it's been too tall and not within, like, the two-story. They're going up to, like, almost three stories and stuff. So we wanted to put more verbiage around, making it clear the heights of the buildings. There was minimum changes to what's in the Historic Register District, which is where St. Mark's Church is. Just clarification on the heights, but basically no major change. Again, about the brick, we've seen a lot of hardy panels and stuff being used on the big apartment complexes, that we do not feel like that's appropriate for the neighborhood. So that's why we wanted to make it clear to the developers that when they come for a development in the neighborhood, that it is going to have to be majority brick to keep the character. We decided to put things in zones to make it a little bit more clear, but again, the Historic Register District, I think that's what it's called, isn't it, Robin? The guidelines have not changed. I mean, just minimum about the brick, but it does not address the use, or the property can, can or cannot be sold. We also have Nextdoor, where we posted our meetings on Nextdoor to review the guidelines for the neighborhood. And then, of course, we mailed out the letters to let everyone know about the changes based on the emails that's in the system. The every, the same emails, I'm assuming that every historic guideline change or zoning change would be used.
No more questions? When you, you were talking about, about the brick, you said the, the majority of the building be brick. When you came up with an 80%... brick, when you came up with an 80 percent?
Yeah, we wanted 100 percent. We compromised and made it 80.
Well, I mean, and I'm thinking, you know, if you've got three sides, that's almost 75 percent of the building and not just 80. Did you, the revision, did you read that to see if that would sort of meet the intent of the neighborhood?
Just for the Worthing. I mean, I would think that we are not willing to, we wanted to stay 80 percent for everything other than the Worthing district, because no other property owner has questioned or had any issues with that. So since the Worthing property owner asked for it to be revised, then, you know, we'll compromise and agree to have that revised for the Worthing district. I mean, to me, changing it, and I appreciate Robin offering this, changing it on Rosa Parks, when you go down Rosa Parks, mainly what you see down Rosa Parks is the Worthing complex, which is all brick. It makes sense to me to continue that and have that same look going all the way down to Jefferson.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep, please.
Am I correct that when we vote for this, we're just voting that this is eligible for zoning? No, we are actually adopting this?
Yeah, we're adopting this.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just to say, the overlay has been in place since 2007. So this is not new to, respectfully, to any new owners that might look into purchase. So, you know, they are very aware that it's under Historic overlay, and if there were to be any questions, to address that with the Metro Historic Commission staff. So, you know, I think that the commission and the staff works very hard to have collaborative process with new owners and new builders. So it's not a new overlay, it's not new guidelines. They are just, I understand how the Development Committee has gone through this process, because they've seen the historic fabric of Germantown. It's very, Germantown, I have a disclosure, I do live in the neighborhood, but I do not have any financial benefit out of having changes to this overlay. But it has changed because of the commercial development, so I believe that the residential and just in your borderline properties are very concerned that that Germantown historic fabric has definitely been impacted. So it's very reasonable to have these kind of revisions to their overlay. So just to be clear that this is not new overlay, this is very well-known, that Historic Germantown has been historic for many years. So, thank you.
Thanks, Manay. Thank you very much. We close public hearing. Okay, any other commissioners have any comments based on that?
I would like to move approval of the revisions to the Germantown Historic overlay per the process of the Development Committee and also by the staff of Metro Historic Zoning Commission.
What about the recommendation?
Oh, yes, and the recommendation to the verbiage that is on the screen.
Second. Okay, we have a...
As well as the material language, which is not on your screen, because it's new.
The 85 percent?
Yes.
Okay, other than Worthing.
I just want to make sure that, does the motion include other materials for Worthing, which is the paper passed around and not on the screen?
Oh, yes, it does.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. We thought that the paper passed around was this. I did, anyway, so I tell you what, why don't you just read this into it? Is it okay if she does that? Okay, so what's up there and then what she reads into it?
All right, the proposed additional language to Section 3, new construction facade, Section F, facade materials. A greater percentage of accent materials may be appropriate to create a more varied and appropriately neighborhood scaled building facade enassing within the Worthing complex development zone. And Rosa Parks, Rosa L. Parks Boulevard, no?
No.
The neighborhood would not like to include Rosa Parks.
Yeah, not.
Okay, no one?
It was something that I had suggested, but the neighborhood would prefer that you not have that in there. So exclude Rosa Parks.
Okay. Or a motion, I think we already have a second. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. I guess just one of the staff members, if you could answer the question, answer his question.
We have a question.
Okay, let's see now, so we are... Moving on, I guess we are ready for 421 Broadway? Is that the next one?
The one that was deferred. 919, yes, sir.
Well, we haven't got to that yet. Yeah, we haven't got to that yet. Okay, 421 Broadway.
The violation.
Good afternoon, 421 Broadway. This is a similar violation to the neighboring property 423, which you reviewed last month. They have installed poles and string lighting on the rooftop, visible at the top of the screen.
Excuse me one second. If people, if you can carry your conversations outside, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, Paul.
It's all right. Poles and string lighting on the rooftop and wall signage that was not permitted. A rooftop addition, not visible here but to the right on the screen, was approved in 2016. The guidelines for new construction require that additions are set back from the front of the building at least 30 feet. Permanently installed features visible here that encroach into this area do not meet the section of the guidelines. The commission has previously ruled that string lighting and the supports required for it don't meet the design guidelines. Signage, the wall sign here, which was installed without permit, does not meet Section 4 of the Design Guidelines for allocation of sign area or for its location. Here's the allocation of sign area for the building. When a projecting sign is used, the building's allowed two square feet per foot of frontage for 46 square feet. That is the sign area of the projecting sign. I don't have the best picture of it, but it's at the bottom of the image there. So basically, the 46 square feet of the projecting sign that was approved last year maxes out their overall sign area. So anything additional, this estimated eight square feet of signage is over the building's allotted sign area. In addition, the guidelines prohibit wall signs to cover windows or architectural features. And as this one was installed, it's a sort of glass box right over the transom. It does not meet the Design Guidelines for location. There's also a vinyl banner at the top of the building, which the business has been notified to be, to remove. It's been up more than 30 days already. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the unpermitted signage, the wall sign, and the vinyl banner, the string lighting and poles, and recommends that they be removed within 30 days, finding that the project does not meet Sections 3H for additions, 2T for lighting, or Section 4 for signage. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Would like to...
My understanding is that they will not be present, but...
Okay, all right.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
If anybody says the staff remembers painted signage, which is...
Make sure you do your...
We had 421 and 412. 412 has been removed, that's the one with the painted signage. So 421...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll keep up here.
I try to get them on different months to avoid confusion.
And with, by the way, with Robin gone, is she able to keep the, is someone able to keep the minutes?
Oh.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Paul. Open public hearing, would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an unclosed public hearing. Any more discussion or a motion?
Move to adopt staff recommendation for 421 Broadway.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, 1712 Fifth Avenue North.
All right, so the church located at 1712 Fifth Avenue North was constructed in 1939 and initially housed the Freeland Baptist Church. The facilities were enlarged in the 1950s to include an addition of an educational annex. The original part of the church, which you can see with this arrow, contributes to the character of the Salem Town neighborhood, whereas the side addition is not historic due to its character, design, and age of construction. The applicant has made a number of changes to the church without a preservation permit, including the addition of a cupola and changes to cladding and window and door openings, which is considered partial demolitions under the Design Guidelines for the Salem Town neighborhood. The applicant did pull a building permit on January 18, 2017. However, the scope of that building permit was limited to replacing rotted wood and windows. And at that time, when the contractor came around, staff did speak with him to confirm the scope of work and make notes in City Works, which is the Metro's permitting system. And at that time, we noted that they were replacing two side windows, not changing the size of the window opening, but that they may need to repair brick, and that no other work was planned under that permit. Since the scope of that work, as was disclosed to us at that time, is not reviewed in the Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay, staff then signed off with an ignore, and a copy of that permit, as well as staff's notes, are in your packet. So this is a photo of the church before the addition, and alterations, partial demolition were completed. Here is a photo of the church after those unpermitted changes. So we'll just, we'll just go over them, starting with the nonhistoric addition. So the, these changes include replacing the existing, if you saw before, it was a T-111 siding with brick. Staff finds that this change is appropriate, as the T-111 siding is specifically listed as being inappropriate in the Salem Town Design Guidelines. Also, the shape and size of the window and door openings have been altered from the rectangular double-hung windows to a single-pane window with a segmental arch. Also, from a rectangular door opening to one with a segmental arch as well. In addition, the locations of the windows have been changed, and a new window has been added. So they went from three windows to four and kind of moved them around. Staff finds that the alteration of the size, shape, and number of the windows, as well as the door on the later addition, can be appropriate, as it would help further distinguish that non-contributing addition from the historic church. So staff would recommend approval of those changes. So moving on to the changes to the historic church, there's the cupola that was added. Staff finds that the addition of the cupola is inappropriate, as its location has a significant impact on the historic form and character of the church. The Design Guidelines require additions to be located at the rear of the building, which helps to minimize the impact of an addition on a historic building. In addition, the Secretary of Interior Standards do not allow for the addition of conjectural details on historic buildings. And there is no evidence that the addition, that the cupola, is replicating a historic feature. So there's no evidence showing that there was one there before. Rather, the cupola contrasts greatly with the size and scale of the simple design of the historic church. So for these reasons, staff finds that the addition does not meet Section 2C of the Design Guidelines for additions, Section 2A for location, Section 2E for design, as well as Section 1B3 of the Secretary of Interior Standards. So moving on to the windows. So similar to the changes on the non-contributing addition, the shape and size of the window openings on both sides, you're just seeing the right side here, but there were similar changes to the left side of the building, have been altered from the rectangular double-hung windows to the single-pane windows with the segmental arches. And also, similar to the changes to the addition, the locations of the windows were changed, and an additional window was added to each side facade. So, and furthermore, the windows that were used, the materials used to replace were a make-and-model window that the commission has specifically not allowed for replacement in historic buildings previously. So there's that as well. So for this, staff finds that it's inappropriate to alter the shape, size, location, and number of window openings on the historic church, as the windows are a character-defining feature and highly visible from the street. So staff finds these to be inappropriate, and to not meet Section 5B2 for appropriate demolition, and to meet Section 5B1 for inappropriate demolition. In addition, the windows that were used for replacement do not meet Section 3D of the Design Guidelines for materials. So moving on, the applicant has also removed historic brick on the church, and it no longer exists, so it cannot be reinstalled. So here are some closer-up photos. According to the engineer's report that was received as part of the application, wall frame rot and deterioration were discovered during the window replacement, and the brick on the left side of the historic building tilted outward, causing the reframing to fail. So to stabilize that, the entire left side of the historic church was removed. When the masonry was replaced, the brickwork at the corners, which you can see on the right photo, as well as the photos here, was not completed. So you can see that here. Removing historic brick from the entire left facade is considered partial demolition and should have been reviewed under a preservation permit, so that staff could determine the appropriateness of the partial demolition, and if appropriate, monitor that demolition and review the masonry that's used for replacement. Since the original brick no longer exists, staff recommends that the two sides of the historic church be altered so that the vertical stretchers that were located along the bottom of the brick wall and above the windows be replaced. And, well, we could always go back, you could see that on the initial photo. But in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the alterations to the nonhistoric portion of the building. This would include replacing of the cladding with brick and the changes to the windows, finding that those do meet the Design Guidelines. Staff recommends disapproval of the partial demolition and alterations made to the historic brick and windows on the church, as well as the addition of the cupola, finding that they do not meet the Design Guidelines for Salem Town, and with the following items to be corrected in 60 days, and these are on your screen. That would include removing the cupola, restoring the original roof form to its original configuration with the material to match the existing. Two, the brick on the two sides of the historic church should be altered so that the vertical stretchers that were located at the bottom of the brick wall and above the windows be reinstalled, and that no more brick is approved for removal. And finally, that the original window locations, dimensions, design, and materials be reinstalled, and that the applicant submit drawings showing those dimensions and locations, as well as information about the materials that staff would review prior to making those changes. Any questions?
Before you go, let's go back to that rendering. I mean, it wasn't a rendering, but I thought it was the actual, that...
This, so this was after the changes were made?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just, the arrows are good. So basically, the addition you're, we're fine, you're okay with, is the cupola. Can you use your arrows to...
Right, okay. So it would be the addition of the cupola, the changes to the windows on the historic church, as well as the partial demolition of the brick, but understanding that it's been removed, it's gone, we would ask that those vertical stretchers along the bottom of the brick be replaced, as well as above the windows.
Be replaced with...
Right. Well, not with something similar that was there, what was there before. I should have included a zoomed-in photo, but on this photo, you could see like a, I believe, a soldier course along the bottom and above the windows.
So the same brick, but just...
A similar brick.
Okay.
Yes.
Listen, does that include the window in the entrance?
That one does not appear to have been changed. That one does not appear to have been changed. Well, the material may have been changed, but the opening.
Okay. Melissa, so the window, the original windows are... The recommendation is to replace the windows, the new windows, to that type of window?
No, it would be to, for the historic church, to, you can see here, there are rectangular double-hung windows, and the openings, the shape, as well as the number and location of the openings have been changed, to essentially restore that. And then, we would also need to review the make-and-model of the windows that go into the historic building.
Right. So if the original windows were not saved, they'll have to be refabricated?
Well, it would just have to be something that the commission has previously approved for replacement on a historic building, and we do have a list of those, and we're more than happy to look at samples if the applicant is considering something else.
Okay, so let me be clear one more time. So on the nonhistorical, on the educational side, they would have to replace those like the similar original windows?
As far as the size and shape and location of the openings, no. We're recommending approval of that, because it is a nonhistoric addition. Under the Secretary of Interior Standards, additions, it's advisable to distinguish them from historic structure, so we found that these changes do meet the Design Guidelines.
That's okay, yeah. Even if they look different, even their shape and size and design is different, it's because it differentiates the historical from the nonhistorical.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? Yeah, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Robert Blagojevich. I live at 4113 Sneed Road in Nashville, 37215. I'm a member of St. Petco Orthodox Church. I was chosen by the board members for me to make the presentation. I'm joined by Father Alexander Voykovitch, who's our parish priest, and Michael Martini, who is also a member of our board. You saw the before-and-after pictures, and we are a small parish of mostly people who have fled war-torn Bosnia and Serbia. These are immigrants that ran away from Christian cleansing and ethnic cleansing to come to the United States for a new life and pursue the American dream, which they have over the last, since 1997. Over the many years, they've moved from, we have moved, from various churches, celebrating our faith in a small Orthodox church in the nation's neighborhood on Saturdays, until one day, we discovered a church that was for sale in Salem Town for $130,000. It had been listed since 2007 at $375,000. No one would buy the church because of its status, it was in such bad repair, and the deed that we work under is designed only to house Christian organizations. So if we were anything other than Christian, we could not have qualified to buy the property and purchase it. Once we purchased, we knew, as I've provided documents to the board, the real estate inspection, and also subsequently Tony Lock, our structural engineer, determined that the church was in very bad repair, the brick, the windows, the roof, the roofing structure. And we are a very modest church of roughly 30 to 40 families. It took us four years to raise the money to not just purchase the church, but then subsequently to make the repairs that we made just under $150,000. We responsibly hired a licensed contractor, who we discussed the scope of our work, and he said he would coordinate with Metro Housing and Codes to make sure that we were in compliance. The construction company, Musgrove Construction, a licensed contractor, worked with Metro, Byron Hall, and assured us that the things that we were doing were proper. Despite the limitation of whatever requests that they had placed through the system for windows and minor repairs, we were assured, once we began construction and discovered we had to stop construction because the structure was so faulty that we had to make sure we could make the repairs, that Codes was working with our contractor. And so it was from December of 2000, of last year, through July of this year, that we, in good faith, listened to our contractor, who was coordinating with Metro Codes, that we were in compliance. And then I learned through the process that in order for us to change the narthics, the front of the church, we wanted to take that front part down and change it into a more traditional Orthodox architecture. We had hired an architect from South Carolina, who suggested the cupola, that is very much in spirit with our Orthodox tradition, not knowing we were violating Historic Commission regs, that we, I responsibly contacted the staff, saying, "Look, we understand that we've got to get your approval for this next Phase 2 of our project, and we want to make sure we comply." And it was then, in July, August of that year, that I was notified, that we were out of compliance with what was done. So I tell you this, that we worked in good faith with contractors and we thought with Codes, to make what one would argue before-and-after photos, that we have truly upgraded the neighborhood. And I can tell you to a person that we've talked to in the neighborhood, that they have thanked us, whether it's proactive or saying, "Hey, we really appreciate what you've done to this church. Thank you very much, you've improved the neighborhood," that, you know, I would ask you to make an exception for us, because if we were to ask to make the changes that were recommended by the staff, it would bankrupt our church. We have roughly $35,000 in our kitty right now. That's designed to obviously pay our utility bills, pay our priest, maintain the building that we've spent almost $150,000 to get to this point, that I would ask that you forgive us for what we've done unwittingly, and hopefully give us the benefit of the doubt, that we thought we were working responsibly within the guidelines. I would defer any comment from Father Alexander. If you have anything to say, Father, on behalf of this, please do. We still have five minutes.
My name is Father Alexander, and speaking as a priest of the Serbian Orthodox Church, it's very hard to me, you know, because I know how my parishioners felt too hard to make this church looks as now looks. Because when we bought that church, I wasn't priest here, but I came here in 2014. And since then, we start working hard to raise the money and fix all the walls, which is coming down and almost failing, and try to make this church look as an Orthodox church. All my parishioners came from Bosnia and Serbia as refugees, and I know that we started a mission here in 2003, and from 2003 and end of 2012, we didn't have a church. So we also was refugees here, moving to the several churches here, and taking our stuff with us, our sisters and the people taking the pat and pants, trying to cooking, we try to take also the religious stuff with us. So it was a very hard time for us. So when we bought this church, we was very happy. And then we start dreaming how we can approve this church and make it looks nicer. And when we did this, we was so happy, and we didn't know that we doing anything wrong. So we did everything in a good faith, and we are so happy what we did, but we didn't know that we did something wrong. So we apologize for that and asking for forgiveness, because that wasn't our goal. We just wanted to make the church looks nicer and better, and to be home for all our parishioners, not just for our parishioners, but all people in Nashville, because the church is open for everybody who wants to come there and worship the God. So that's all what I must say.
Thank you, Father. So I would just conclude and reinforce that we're hoping for some dispensation here. We worked in good faith with, we thought, professional people, telling us that as we went along with our project, that we were in compliance.
I hope for one second. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak regarding this project? If you so, could you wave your hand? Okay. All right, well, sir, I'm going to open public hearing, and then we'll call you back.
Thank you.
Okay, open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Nathan Weinberg. I live at 3944 Moss Rose Drive in East Nashville. Used to be a resident of Germantown, and walked past this building on a number of occasions. I don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak, but I want to offer a little bit of my building expertise to the conversation, to provide some perspective here. First of all, I think that it looks beautiful, but that doesn't have anything to do necessarily with the historic component. Want to talk about the brick and the soldier courses. If the brick has been removed, then adding soldier courses and modifying the windows back to their original sort of look, which is on a slide somewhere on here, is going to be almost impossible, because the soldier courses are going to stand out. The reason that brick looks the way that it does, 40, 50, 70 years later, is because it's been sitting outside for that period of time. And it is almost impossible, through mechanical means, to replicate that. And so you're going to affect, I think actually they've done a very good job on the structure, making it look as good as they possibly could with new brick. I think it's going to be very challenging to get soldier course brick, which is the stuff, if you look at the white concrete, I can see you sort of staring at it, if you look at the white concrete, it's the vertical bricks, that's called a soldier course, then you have the bricklay pattern above that. Well, they're talking about doing that soldier course above, and you can kind of see it on the ledges beneath the windows as well. Changing that brick is going to be detrimental to the look of the structure. That's that component of it. I will also say that I think that they've done a very nice job here, short of the missing brick on the corner, which is going to cause them significant water issues later in the time. And so if I'm offering any components of advice, I'd suggest that you have your mason add those pieces of brick, because I think that the building will likely fall over without that at some point. This building likely wouldn't be here today, had somebody not intervened. So I'll just say that without it, we wouldn't be having a conversation at all about preserving it historically.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing, but would the applicant come up? Just want to, if we can just kind of talk through a little bit. These are always tough, tough things to talk about, because of...
Could I first thank the gentleman, who I don't know and met for the first time today, for your very objective support here, because we need all the support we can get.
Yeah, we appreciate him too. So that's good. So the contractor, he pulled a valid permit, and maybe staff can help out too at this, but just so we don't have to call you back and forth. He pulled a valid permit for it.
Yes.
Yeah, Melissa, I'm sorry.
Let me go in my notes. So it looks like in January of this year, they did pull a building permit. The scope was really limited to replacing rotted wood and windows. And one of our staff members spoke with the contractor at that time to really get a good handle on the scope, and they told us specifically that they were replacing two side windows, not changing the size of the window openings, possibly repairing brick, but there was no other work planned.
So the addition was not part of the permit?
Correct. The addition, as well as the alterations to the windows or changing the facade material, none of those were under the scope at that time, so we were not aware.
Had no knowledge of that.
Okay. Because therein lies the issue, they basically misrepresented the scope of the project. Codes would have alerted us and everyone else had an addition been planned, or anything that was, everything that they did would have, you would have learned about it right when it happened. Were you about to say something else, Melissa?
No, if there had been a permit for an addition, we would have been flagged on that, and we would have sat down and had a similar conversation, and if needed, required drawings and brought it to this commission.
And my response is similar as to what I said earlier, and that was, we worked with the contractor, and I even met Mr. Hall and talked to him, and he said, "You guys are just fine, keep working," and worked with Mark, Musgrove. And then I had mentioned to Byron Hall, the Metro Codes person, that we want to do an addition, that we wanted to change the front of the church and style it more in an Orthodox architecture, and he said, "You're going to have to go to the commission to get approval on that," which is when I proactively contacted them responsibly, understanding there was a limitation.
So once you were alerted, you talked to them?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's good. And the architect, wasn't it a local architect?
He was not.
Did you have a question for him, Ann?
Not necessarily for gentlemen, but as they began to, within the scope that was identified for the building permit, as they got into and realized that there was some rotted wood and that more brick was going to be required, would that have, where would that have gone after, I mean, would they have, should they have alerted Codes and say, "Okay, this is what we have"?
Well, I'm not sure that it would be something that would be under the purview of Codes, but it would definitely be something that we would have reviewed.
Well, I know the change would be, but I mean, you know, when you're having construction and you see things that you hadn't, you weren't aware of, when would that have, I mean, obviously the contractor identified it and just sort of moved forward.
Right. And whenever we do see these permits come across our desk, whether or not it's something we have reviewed, or if it's, like in the case of this permit, not in the scope of what we would review, we do have a conversation with the contractor to clarify the scope, as well as to have that conversation. If anything changes, if you are altering windows or making these changes, please contact us.
Did any of our staff have that conversation with them?
We did, and it's in your packet, where we made those notes, that we try to keep a record when we do have these conversations. So yes, we did.
But that was at the beginning?
Right, that was in January, and with the contractor.
We didn't know that as they got into it. And typically, what would happen is that they would have a permit, and we always tell them when we hand them the permit, if there's any changes, just give us a call, quit working, give us a call. But since they didn't have a permit for this work, they didn't know to call us. Because they didn't have a permit for it.
It's sort of the contractor that they need to be talking to.
I don't want to place blame, but I just want to represent to you, we would have done the responsible thing.
And we certainly understand that, but, you know, we see too many times...
Has the contractor been notified too of this violation?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's not returned my phone calls.
No, neither one.
Okay, good. Okay, well, let us talk about this. We may call you back up, but thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Okay. So obviously, this is a really difficult one, because we've seen it before, where basically the applicant has been, owner's been misled, I guess is probably an easy way to say it, I guess. And, but, the issue we have, though, if we just completely turn our head to it, somebody else can say, "Well, you turned your head to them, did you do it just because you felt, you know?" So we just have to be, we have to really think through this, because I know it's a sensitive subject, and it's, it seems like they tried to do everything right, but unfortunately, the people they hired didn't necessarily do everything right.
What are the considerations for imposing...
I was asking, since I'm new, I want to know, what are the considerations for imposing something on them that would create economic hardship?
That's where it gets tough, because we don't, we hate to have to do that, so we could probably, I don't know, if, maybe in...
There is a process that, and again, I guess it goes back to knowing more things on the front end. If they were to have gotten into it, and it would have been an economic hardship, they could have come before the commission and argued that, and then consideration could have been given to them at that point. The tough thing is, now that they're on the back end of it, it's a lot harder to do when you start looking at treating everyone equally across the board.
I do have one more question. In looking at the initial use of the bill, not use in the context of what we normally speak of, but this being a traditional Baptist church versus now being the Orthodox church, what allowances are there for that as well? If any? Not use, but...
Design?
Yes. In tradition, and the context of religious purpose.
Maybe you guys might can answer that out better.
That's not our purview, right?
I mean, in a way, it does sound like a use issue, which you don't consider, you really just look at what is the historic design, and what are the proposed changes, and do those proposed changes meet the guidelines or not? These were all changes that, you know, just on a staff level, we couldn't approve.
Robin, historically, have you had anything like this come before you in a church civic setting?
I don't recall anything, no.
Thank you.
And I ask that, because I also run a religious organization, so I understand the importance of having the differentiation between exterior and interior components. So that's why I posed the question. So that's why I posed the question.
Understood, yeah.
If, if we were to, say, adopt staff recommendation, could we encourage them to come back? I mean, come to staff and talk through some of the issues and some of their.
Well, the reason it's before you today is because it doesn't exactly meet the guideline, so we couldn't approve it. If you wanted to continue to have discussions, I would recommend asking the applicant for a deferral and giving a specific direction on what we should be working towards.
Okay. Well, and my thought is, I mean, considering the financial hardship and maybe some compromises that, for instance, leaving the four windows, I mean, and putting in the windows that originally were historically significant and removing the cupola, I mean, making some minor changes like that, even though I know, I know within our purview, we cannot really.
Well, that's good direction. I mean, it gives direction.
I will say that changing out the windows back may not be as easy as it sounds because of.
Sure, sure. None of this is easy.
No, no.
But I mean, I don't, I'm trying to sort of see where we might.
Yeah, fill in the.
Because it's not, I mean, I think their intent was to do the right thing and they unfortunately hired the wrong person.
Also, I think that Ladonna's made a really good, for me as well, is that if we made an exception, it would be because of the change of religious affiliation, which is very unique. You know, we do make exceptions, but we have to have good reason to do that.
But we don't do, we don't do use.
Legal, is there any kind of comment on that, please?
I think it would, if maybe there was, the neighborhood had lots of historic, like in your example, Baptist churches, and now it was getting converted over to a church that practices Catholicism, it'd more, it'd be more about the look of a traditionally Baptist church, whereas you, I don't think you can give, or I can't, you know, instruct the commission what to do. I think you have to just limit it to what does the structure, the overall massing look like in that neighborhood without any consideration to the religion unless the purpose of the overlay or the design guidelines were to adopt buildings based upon that church originally, if that makes sense. So if the, the design guidelines were put in place to preserve churches that looked just like this, then yes. But since that was not the purpose originally of the design guidelines, you have to follow the intent and purpose of the guidelines as.
Yeah, I think to us, it's just a structure.
Yeah.
And we're preserving a historically significant structure and not necessarily the use.
Yeah, I, I think that as asking for a deferral, but giving some more comment to you to work with you guys a little bit more would be helpful, like maybe in this, you guys chime in, but my thought is, well, first you got to fix that corner. I almost say you need to do something now, just before it doesn't get worse. But, well, let me finish, let me keep my thoughts so I don't lose it all. But, and then I think, you know, maybe the, and also I'd say we give them, you know, we work with them on the timeframe, just understanding the hardship that we work with them a period and I'm not going to, I don't know, I don't, I'd rather that be thought through a little bit more than me just to spit out, you know, a year or six months or whatever, but, but a period, a little bit longer to work with it, understand the negligence, I would recommend that they go and talk to their contractor. But the cupola, I think those can be removed and maybe it's, how would it be if it was on the addition? No problem there, would it?
How would it be?
If the cupola was on the addition?
Oh, yeah, that, I mean, that might be a possibility. I was just thinking about the earlier discussion. One way to think about it is if you have a residential building that's now commercial, it's a different use, there's different people in there with a different need, just like two different congregations probably have a different need for their space. And you would allow for changes to that residential building, sign out front an addition, but that, that meet the guidelines. And so maybe the same way to think about this, yes, it's a different congregation now, but those changes maybe should still meet the guidelines.
Would the cupola staying where it is meet that guideline to not?
We didn't think so, but again, that, you know, we're, we just give you a recommendation, it's totally up to you to make those decisions.
Well, maybe then, maybe that's something to go by then, if it's something that's changing the use, that the cupola in this scenario, and I'm staring at you, so maybe you can agree with.
When I say the cupola, all I can see are, are some of the design guidelines and the components of a building that we've had to deal with over and over and over again. And I just, I don't, I just sort of don't want to go there. And I mean, I, I mean, you talk about it adding to the, the building, it's not a matter of them just picking it up and turning it over and putting it on top. I mean, it's, so.
That's the economic hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, you, you had asked staff about the timeline. I mean, can we set a timeline? Are, are we bound for a certain?
Well, my first thought is if your direction is specific enough, it might not even need to come back to you. It, it just depends on how specific that direction is.
Well, I guess my reservation is, is that I think they, having had this experience, they probably want to come back to either the staff or to us to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Right.
That they're doing the right thing. So I mean, I, I don't, I don't think they want to get some direction just and then go.
No, I meant if, if your direction to staff was specific enough, we could work it out and not.
I guess let me finish my other thought then. Like the, you can't put that brick back on there, so it's gone, so there's no, there's no saving that. They would definitely have to fix the corner as soon as possible. I'm not sure the soldier course at this point is going to be that much valid, you know, because you're not putting the brick back, so it's, I don't really, I don't, I would say that's not as much necessary. So you really get to the windows and the cupola. So I, that's where I was going with maybe, like I said, it's just my suggestion, that over time, move the cupola to the addition, fix the roof and, you know, maybe there's a way to fill in, you know, and I'm not sure what to do with the windows, but.
Would you like us to?
Let us keep talking on it, keep the thought going, because I'd be, I want to hear you guys and especially staff's opinion on this since I'm kind of just flying out there with it, but.
I mean, I think those two things are, I guess, are the more fixable, reasonable approaches to closer meeting our guidelines at this point. And if we were to give staff that direction, would that be enough direction to guide them?
What I heard was that since the brick is gone and the new brick is appropriate, that's appropriate, that the soldier course really isn't a character defining feature. It was important, but not significant, so that's okay. And that the cupola be moved to the late, to the addition, which is not historic. And then there's a question about the windows and I wonder if that may be kind of in the same vein as the brick where the change has been made and to undo it may cause more issues than to allow.
Yeah.
Will the pitch of the roof on the addition support anything on top of it?
That's a good point.
Right, it wouldn't be sufficient over there.
It probably could be, it probably could be, but I don't know for sure.
Well, like I said, I mean, it's not going to be.
Not the same, obviously, but.
Okay.
I mean, it's a lower pitch there in general, so what would that look like or?
Yeah, it is a good point. I was trying to get a compromise there. That's where I was going.
Financially, it would still be the same.
Yeah.
Well, and I was thinking if we stretched it out over a period of time and that's the one change to it. But unless we feel like, and you guys will back up, that it's a new use and although it's not part of the story guidelines, it is a new use. And then in that case, we could allow it. I mean, we would just have to, would it be okay if we, we've got, we say, we just want to work with the really the language, because we just, you know, and my precedent police would be here, it's like, we just know that somebody could be listening and say, okay, will you allow them to do this? And, you know, I just want to make sure if we do this, we've got it really tight. And it's not even based on hardship, just based on the fact of it where we are now.
Yeah, right.
So would it be better if we just deferred it to get it really tight language or just to, or really try to come up with that language right now for the future?
Are we asking to defer for the staff to come up with it?
Well, to work with the applicant and you kind of get into just where we're going with it, would that be good?
Yes.
It would be good, okay. All right. So do you agree to defer it, to work with staff? You see where we're going with it, that we're?
I believe that I do.
Okay, basically, we're trying to get it where we're going to work with you on all your additions, but we're, we're gonna, we have to make it tight because.
I fully respect that and think ourselves 100% available to work through that. And if we get to that end, you have no idea how grateful I am as a member of our parish that you're giving us a break up.
Well.
We want to celebrate our faith in a nice, new looking, renovated.
And we're trying, yeah, we're trying to work. I'm not, I won't even make a full promise of everything. I don't want to under, under the say that that's what we're definitely going to do, but at least it'll be, give you guys something to work with and we might end up still making some of the changes or saying that, but at least we can work out even a timeframe that may be more workable for you. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And also, as somebody's mentioned, is to, you know, perhaps within this timeline, you'll be able to connect with your contractor and there might be some, you know, compromise there as well, because there's some negligence on that contractor's side that you are, you have a burden now. So, and then it's a burden here for us to help you figure that out.
Well, that's okay, let's not worry about that one, but.
I'm just asking, do we work on the language issue?
Yeah.
Because we're all we've done.
So we're gonna.
Ask him to come and request the deferral?
Yeah, well, he's agreed to do a deferral. Yeah, okay. From his team. Okay, so case deferred. All right, so the next one is the one that came off of consent, which is 919 Walkeerch, right? And so do you want to just have the applicant, the person who had a comment come forward or do you want to state it again or?
I'll go ahead and present it.
Okay.
I'll present it just so that all the information's out there. So 919 Walkeerch is currently a medieval traditional circa 1940 house that contributes to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont neighborhood. The application is to demolish an existing addition and to construct a new rear addition with a ridge raise. The addition does require a side setback determination on the right side. Base zoning requires a five foot side setback and the applicant has proposed to situate the addition just one foot, six inches from the side. So here on the, on the side plan, you can see that first of all, the existing house sits very close to the existing side property line. It's about two feet at its narrowest from the side property line. The side property line then jogs in at kind of an angle right after the back of the house. So the addition will be set in appropriately from the sidewalls of the historic house, but at the same time, because of the situation, the location of the existing house and because of the, the angle of the lot, it's the, the back corner of the addition, which is the closest part of the addition, is only going to be one foot, six inches from that side property line. Let's see, six foot, yeah. Okay, oh, there we go, thank you. So here are the images of the addition. Again, you can see that they are doing a two foot ridge raise and they are bringing it in, they're required two feet from the side, so that meets the design guidelines. The addition is, does seem large here, but they are taking off an existing addition, so what they're adding is less than kind of what seems here. Let's see, the addition will have a depth of 38 feet and it, in the end, the house with the addition will have a footprint of 2,250 square feet. Staff finds that the materials, the roof form, orientation, materials, I think I said materials, and all the major components do meet the design guidelines. You'll see the right side elevation doesn't really have very many windows. That is the elevation that sits quite close to the side property line, so staff found that A, it was not going to be highly visible from the street and B, that because of, it's so close to the fire, to the side property line, that there would be some fire rating issues, so having fewer windows was appropriate in this instance. So in conclusions, staff recommends, sorry, that's how I page. So staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. The lap siding be smooth with a maximum reveal of five inches. Staff approve the final details, dimensions and materials of the windows and doors. Staff approve the roof color and masonry color. And finally, that the HVAC be located on, behind the house or, it says here on either side, but it really should be on the left side because you can't really place it on the right side without it being over the side property line. So with these conditions, staff finds that the project meets sections three, four and five of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. And I'm not sure if the applicant is here.
Okay, because, oh, the applicant's here. Would you like to come forward and say anything regarding this project?
My name is Ron Toland, I live at 700 Amondale in Nashville. I am the builder. The people that own the property, I have built homes for before. And before we permitted or anything, we have worked both onsite and in all communication with the historical. And it is our intent to totally comply with all of their requests and everything we've submitted. And the house sits where the footprint is now. We're simply wanting to use that footprint and, and I don't know what the objection might be as we hadn't heard anything before, but if I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to.
Okay, thanks. Maybe just stay closed. Okay, open public hearing service. Please state your name and address and what you'd like to say regarding this project.
Yes, my name is William Nelson and I live at 919 Wal, I mean, 917 Walkeerch Avenue. I want to provide some brief historic context to this project. At 921, the residents of that home who only have 1.5 foot, that's about the size of this podium, between their house, the reason why they're not complaining is because they applied for zoning variance, I'm pretty sure previously, to build their home, which is large and outsized. So now there's only a 1.5 foot distance between their home. This variance breaks typically what is a five foot distance between the homes. That's not a lot, but it does provide you some sense of privacy. Currently, the way the house at 921 is built, they have a, a digital TV that is large as a digital sign, that when I walk out my backyard at nighttime, I can see their TV, it's as large as a digital sign. So the, the privacy there is decreasing more and more. Sometimes I walk out of my house and I can hear people's televisions. And I want to put context into this, is that I've lived at that residence on and, on and off for over 50 years. And there has never really been this problem before. I can't speak to the builder because I'm, I'm not familiar with him, but I knew that, I do know that the owners who, they are from California, they are investors, they don't really, they are not invested in the neighborhood, they don't really care about it, they're just caring about making a profit. They did a survey next to our property that extended probably fully two and a half to three feet onto our property. And I looked at them and I said, surely not. So it was corrected. My family really just doesn't have faith that they're going to abide by the variance. We also want to stop the further encroachment of properties that are outsized in the neighborhood that some of the neighbors don't seem to be concerned about, but it's going to in the future impact them.
So before you sit down, so your, your issue is the, the one foot six, that's what you're?
Yeah, that, the one, the one foot six is, is my issue because current, they have a five foot, five foot set aside that is currently in the zonings.
Okay, all right, thank you. So. So, we got more comments? Oh, please, yeah, come forward. I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought it was just him.
I'm here on behalf of the seller as well. The house that it affects is the one to the right, and the seller has had a conversation with that homeowner. And he specifically asked, I just built a pool, and are you going to have a window or anything that's going to look down onto my property? And he checked the plans, and he said, no, you will not. So that's basically a blind wall on that side over there. And, so there's, so the, the house that it mostly affects is on the right-hand side, and there's not any windows on that side. So I just want to make that one point. And then also, I'd like to make the point that there have been two contracts on this house that have fallen through because of the state of disrepair of this home. And our most recent contract just canceled this morning. So, you know, the house, they had a structural engineer come out, structural engineer says that, you know, you need to do this, you need to do that. Historical says you can't do this, you can't do that. So, again, two contracts have fallen through. The things that I don't think that some of the homeowners in that area, although the, I've lived in Nashville all my life, I'm a native, born and raised, however the sellers are, from California, as he stated. But the things that the local native Nashvillians need to realize is that they are helping their property values. If all of this new growth was not coming in there, there's no way that homeowner that sold that house would have been able to sell that house for $475,000, which is what they made. And these homeowners are making 600, 700,000 in other areas in downtown Nashville. So, you know, they are making a lot of money, and on their houses that they would not otherwise have made.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But this, this seller is not trying to, I mean, they're, they're kind of stuck.
Thank you very much.
It's a pig in a poke at this point.
Thank you very much.
They're handicapped.
Susan Gregory.
Just, okay. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close. I think we understand your, your issue. Close public hearing. Yes, ma'am?
Go ahead. The side line? Do you want an area? Second, yes. All right. Okay. All right. Okay. I can't see, my screen is funny.
Well, I...
Brian has a hard copy.
I do.
Chairman too.
Here it comes, Anne.
Yeah, okay.
So let's, I guess we're, so the only, the, the, the neighbor's issue was the setback, but we also heard that it was part of the, it's on the actual site that it was before.
Yes.
Can you, can you verify that, Melissa?
So there is an existing addition that's being demolished. Sorry, don't, don't look, don't get dizzy while I pull this up. Okay, it's coming here. So, there is an addition that's circled with a red box, that's going to be demolished, as well as the upper-story dormer. Those were built, I think, sometime between 1957 and 1968. Those are probably the best photos of it. So, so that part's being removed, and then the addition is going to extend out even further. So they're moving about 13 feet, it looks like.
But, and so they're building it on the same setback as it was originally. Is that true, or no?
Um, I don't believe that is true. Let me just, sorry, let me look up.
The original house was a brick, it was a house, the addition of the house was moved prior to 1957.
Okay. She, she's looking it up for the record.
The current addition steps in, it steps in about four feet, and it looks like the new addition's going to step in two feet, eight inches. So it will step in less than what the existing...
What the addition was.
What the addition is, right.
I guess to, to keep this moving, so the, we, I know we have, you know, we've approved to lower this before. Do you mind describing, just for, maybe just for everybody, just the conditions on how we would, why we're, we typically do allow less of a setback? Or maybe, is there any, and also if there's any criteria to lessen the setback?
Sure.
Do you mind?
Typically, we look first and foremost at the historic house, and where's the historic house? In this case, we found that this setback determination to be appropriate because A, it's not going to be any wider than the historic house, and it is inset appropriately for the entire depth of the house. So it's not like it's stepped in two feet and then steps back out. The entire addition has stepped in over two feet from the back corner. And then, I guess, we also found it to be appropriate because the site is so unusual. And I, I'm sure there are other cases where there's a kind of slant halfway through the lot like this one in Nashville, but it's certainly atypical to have a lot line jog and turn inwards, you know, kind of in, in the rear yard. So for those two instances, because of the existing house, it's not going to be any wider than the existing house, it's inset appropriately. And because of the peculiarities of the site, we found it to be appropriate. And I'd say that's consistent with other setback determinations that we've looked at and recommended approval for, as we look at what's the existing historic house, where is it on the lot, and what are the peculiarities, if any, of the lot.
I would like to make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion and second. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion, key. Okay, 1621 Forest Avenue. I know we've gone a long time. Does anybody need a break? Are you all good? Okay. 1621 Forest Avenue.
Okay, sorry.
21, 1621.
This project is for demolition of a historic building due to a fire, and these photographs are the current conditions. The applicant did not provide any supporting information for this request until this morning, so staff hasn't had a chance to review it. So the first question for you is, did you want to suspend your rules in order to accept that new information or not?
Did you, so you didn't have a chance to review it all?
We have not.
Okay. It's my understanding, too, that it didn't seem to have all the information that you originally had asked for in the...
Typically, the engineering reports we receive are fairly detailed with photographs explaining specific issues and where those, those concerns are within the building. And this was a one-page that really, you know, again, I just glanced at it, I didn't have time to fully review it, but didn't appear to be adequate enough for, this is essentially an economic hardship case, and the applications for economic hardship have a very long list of items that need to be part of the application. The engineer report is just one of them. But again, we did only receive it this morning and haven't had a chance to review that. And yes, it does appear to, like, it will not be adequate enough to change the recommendation.
So, I would say to the applicant that it might be good to take the time to, to, you know, get your report a little bit more in order and give us time to review it. That way, because, you know, we, it is a pretty, you know, a lot of information that we require when we do a hardship. But we do grant them, I mean, we, we do look at all the economic impact of it all, but if it's not all there, we won't be able to look at it, and we may not be able to judge your case the way you'd like us to be able to be indifferent to. So I would, I'd recommend you, you'd look at deferring it until then, but obviously that is your decision. And whomever, if, is it something you're interested in, or do you want us to hear your case?
Just very briefly, without, just, unfortunately, we're on kind of a timeline. This house tragically burnt, burnt, and was demolished, or burnt down in June. Insurance is kind of pushing us because we lose the housing where my client is able to stay in right now is coming up. So we're kind of on a timeline with him even having a place to live right now. We apologize not getting that full report in. My, I guess my wish was, and again, I've only served on the beer board, I've really never been in front of you guys before. We do something called a grant and delay with the beer board, where you can hear the information, and then once you get the rest of the information, you can decide, or get a recommendation independently, maybe make a decision without having another commission meeting or being in front of the commission again. I'm not sure if that's an option.
The problem with hardship, and I, I don't know if, Robin, you can say it more eloquently, but when we have a hardship, it's really a lot of, because, you know, it's a tough thing to grant a hardship. And we normally get a full report that's been, you guys have put, been, put a lot of time into, and, and staff has been able to put a lot of time into. But, I mean, we've looked at them and, you know, felt, agreed with plenty of them, but it's, but it's, we would, if we don't have that information, you're not getting the benefit of the doubt from it. So I don't know about your, I understand your time constraints, I know that's tough, but...
We get on the next agenda then, or if we can get all that in?
Oh, yeah, anytime.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think I got my...
I mean, I don't say absolutely, she can say it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. That'll give you a much better. So, so per the applicant, we're going to defer this until the next meeting. Okay. 1100 Gilmore Avenue.
1100 Gilmore Avenue is a pre-1914 folk Victorian house that's located at the corner of Gilmore and 11th Avenue North. The lot is unusually wide at 75-foot wide. Most lots in this neighborhood are typically 50 foot, 50 feet wide. Here is the site plan. Just first, before I describe everything else, the X on the site plan indicates an addition, a screened porch addition, that staff approved administratively, so it's not part of this conversation, it's already been approved by the staff. So here's the site plan and a photo of the location of the proposed addition that's before you. The applicant is proposing to construct a side porch addition, which can be appropriate on the lot of this side. However, staff finds that the design of this side addition is more akin to the design of an outbuilding and does not meet the design guideline. Outbuildings should only be located in the established rear yard and are not appropriate in a side yard like this one. MHCC, of course, does not regulate use, but it does regulate design. When a staff states that the design is more akin to an outbuilding, note that an outbuilding isn't necessarily a use. An outbuilding can be used as a garage, as a recording studio, as an apartment, as a storage shed, you know, an outbuilding is a, is a type of building. So in this recommendation, staff is looking solely at the design of the structure and how it relates to the historic house. So I'm going to quickly move through the design again. The X is, I know it looks really big and bold, but you're supposed to ignore it. So here's the floor plan of the side addition. Here is the front facade facing Gilmore. Here is the rear facade facing the rear yard, and here is a side facade facing 11th Avenue North. So staff has three main concerns about the design. One, how it's connected to the historic house. Two, its floor level. And three, the size of the openings. I'm going to go through these each kind of in more detail. So first, the connection to the house. The addition is connected to the historic house with a minimal connector that is 5 feet, 4 inches by 10 feet, 6 inches. Although a minimal connection from the historic house to an addition can be appropriate and is sometimes even preferable, in this instance, the open-air minimal connection appears as a covered walkway connecting the historic house to an outbuilding. The desire for a minimal connection in many cases for additions stems from the desire to preserve as much of the original historic wall of the house as possible. But in this case, it's a completely open-to-air connection, so there's no, part of the historic walls being removed, so there really isn't an argument for a minimal connector. Here's just another image of the minimal connector from the front facade. The addition does not appear to be cohesive part of the historic house, but is a separate structure, again, more akin to an outbuilding. Typically, historic side porch additions have separate reforms, but were still fully connected, those reforms were kind of fully connected to the historic house. So two, our second concern is the floor level. You can see here that the proposed side addition has an at-grade foundation, which is not typical of side porches. It is more typical for side porches to have foundation lines that match the foundation level of the historic house. In this instance, the house's foundation is approximately 18 inches above grade, but the new addition will be located at grade, presumably on a concrete pad, although that wasn't indicated on the drawings. An at-grade concrete pads, or whether, you know, whatever the at-grade material is, that's much more typical of an outbuilding than it is for a side porch addition. So, okay, so here again, you can see the, the three exterior steps that lead down from the house to the side porch. And our third concern is the size of the openings. Again, the size of the opening at the front facing Gilmore is much more akin to a garage or a carport than it would be to a porch addition. You can see that it is 19 feet wide, and the height of it is eight feet, about eight feet, 6 inches or eight feet tall. And it covers the entire span of the front facade of the porch. So, just so you know, the wall that you're seeing behind, kind of behind the facade is actually set back 20 feet. The opening is completely open with the span that's marked in the arrow. So in staff's review of historic porches, the widest side porch was 12 feet, the span between the columns. Staff typically, typical side porches, whether or not they are screened, typically have column spans that are much less than the 19 feet that you see here. And here's just another image. And just wanted to point out, too, that there is, on the site plan, a driveway leading from an existing kind of small curb cut or entry from the 11th Avenue South side of the property into kind of where the location of the new addition will be. Again, we don't regulate use, but we do regulate design. So staff, in looking at this, you know, quote-unquote porch, is, looked at kind of what are other historic porches in the Waverly Belmont neighborhood, and then outside of the Waverly Belmont neighborhood, and what, how do they typically attach? What is their typical floor level? What's their typical width span for columns? These were the only two that we could find remaining in Waverly Belmont that remain open in nature, and that also have a separate reform. 1818 Glenn and 2031 Elliott. Some outside of the historic overlay, in other historic overlays, including 2003 Greenwood, which is in Eastwood, 1804 Linden, 1716 Blair in Belmont Hillsborough, 2020, I'm sorry, 220 Lauderdale in Cherokee Park, 2106 Woodlawn, and 2605 Woodlawn. So again, here's just all those pictures together. So kind of in our survey, you know, we did find that typical side porches, A, were directly attached to the historic house without a connector, their floor heights matched the floor heights of the historic house, and the expanses between the columns were typically less than 10 feet. So in reviewing typical side porches, staff maintains that the design of the, the proposed side porch is more akin to an outbuilding than that of a side porch. So in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval, finding that the addition's design, location, height, scale, setback, and rhythm of spacing, materials, reform, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings do not meet sections 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E, 3F, 3G, and four of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The applicant is here. I'm happy to answer any questions before she comes up.
I don't think so right now. Thanks, Melissa. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Smouse. My address is 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for this project. So, I don't know, we submitted a drawing also that is the front elevation from Gilmore. I don't know if you can go, it's okay, but if you can go to the site plan, that would be helpful. So I kind of just wanted to go... So I kind of just wanted to go through the, the three concerns that staff has and address all of them individually. First of all, the, the addition that we're proposing is actually not connected to the historic house. It's connected to an addition that was built in 2009. So that kind of, to me, seems to create a gray area. The guidelines are written for additions that are connected to a historic house. Within those guidelines, you know, we are allowed, technically allowed a side addition, as Melissa said. We are set back from the face of historic structure, actually about 55 feet. So the front of the addition we're proposing is 55 feet behind the front of the historic house. And, you know, the connection that we're making, the guidelines state that it should as much as possible use existing window and door openings rather than remove significant amounts of all. So again, this is not historic, but what we were really trying to do is minimize destruction, you know, minimize the, the amount of connection to the house by utilizing what's already there. And, you know, connecting to the existing door, using these existing steps. We're not altering the windows that are on the side of the house. We're not altering the roof line. And so that connection is really just meant to be as minimal as possible. As far as the floor level, you know, again, we're not attaching to the existing historic house. So in, kind of in my mind, this is not a typical historic side porch. This is kind of a, almost a rear porch. You know, it is a side addition, but we are connecting to the rear of the house and to an, to an existing addition that was built in 2009. And again, just, you know, for convenience, we're building on top of an existing gravel pad and using, you know, the change in level that's already there. So not only is it, you know, going to be more cost effective to do that, but we're also bringing that addition down further so it's subservient and massing to the historic house. You can see that in the elevations that the eve line's lower. You know, we are respecting the historic roof slope by echoing that same pitch, but we, you know, the ridge of the roof is brought down due to that change in grade. And then the rhythm of the openings, you know, again, this is not a typical side porch. You know, the client really wants us to be as open as possible. Structurally, a post is not needed there. And, you know, it's, it's hard, it seems kind of like a gray area, that there's no specific guideline that actually addresses porch openings. The rhythm of the openings actually addresses windows and doors. So it's, you know, if, if a column needs to be there, I think we're open to, to discussing that. The columns on the existing front porch are about 12 to 13 feet apart. So it's not, you know, an atypical kind of distance for this house. But again, you know, if that's something we need to work with staff, I think we're, we're willing to do that. So, and thank you for your time.
Any questions to the applicant? Okay, seen none at the moment. Thank you. You can stay close, just in case. Okay, open public, open public hearing. Someone like to speak or say your name and address?
Sure. My name is Catherine Moffett. I'm the homeowner at 1100 Gilmore Avenue. And I just want to echo what our architect said. We're looking just to create more entertainment space in our backyard. They had taught earlier, staff is, has approved us to screen in the deck that's on the back of the house and turn that into a screen and porch. And so because of that, we worked with her to look at relocating my husband's grill and smoker and possibly, you know, doing it in a covered area, which is kind of how this project came into the inception. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Gets more closer to a dada than it does a side porch. And I think this is sort of opening up some issues that we may encounter on the locations of outbuildings if we were to approve something like this.
I, go ahead.
Also, the staff has, you know, outlined the very clear reasons of their findings. So it seems very reasonable to follow staff on their research and their experience over other projects as well.
There are no other comments, I'll make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I would just add, I definitely think that keeping the floor line would, even regardless of everything else, would be pretty appropriate for this. So although it was an interesting argument, I still think the floor line is one of the more crucial things. But that's just my, my comment in the middle of that. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1430B Greenwood Avenue.
This one's, next case is Paul's. He's putting on his costume. He'll be right out.
Okay.
I'll go see where.
Yeah, I guess since we're, we're having a break, we'll take a quick, let's just make it a real quick, three, five minute break.
At the vacant lot, it's the one in blue, not the one in pink. The new residence is a one and a half story building. It is 28 feet tall from grade, which is within the context of nearby homes, which are up to 29 feet tall. It's, in terms of its width, it's been designed to fit into the triangular shape of the lot. The front section being 30 feet 8 inches wide, the rear section 42 feet 8 inches wide. There are buildings nearby that are as wide as 43 feet. So staff's review on the massing is that it meets the design guidelines and is compatible. The, the new building meets the base setback requirements on the sides and rear. It's 5 feet and 10 feet on the sides and more than 20 feet at the rear. The front setback is 69 feet 4 inches, which does not match the setback of the neighboring buildings. But because the lot tapers so dramatically toward the front, in this case, staff finds that that is appropriate, given those lot conditions. The application meets the design guidelines for roof form, orientation, proportion of rhythm of openings, and mostly for materials that have been approved by the commission previously. Fiber cement siding is drawn with a 6 inch reveal. The design guidelines allow for a reveal more than 5 inches when corners are mitered. As the proposed building has been drawn with corner boards, it's staff's recommendation that the siding keep to a 5 inch reveal maximum. Staff recommends having approval of windows, doors, roofing color and masonry. A detached outbuilding seen here is proposed at the rear of the lot. The outbuilding is one story with a footprint of 528 square feet and a ridge height of 17 feet, which is appropriately subordinate to the, to the main structure. The commission has required separation of 20 feet between an outbuilding and the house previously, but with, again, with this unusual lot shape, staff finds that the 13 feet and 10 inches proposed between the structures is appropriate in this case. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that lap siding has a 5 inch reveal, that the finished floor height is consistent with that of adjacent historic homes, that staff verify windows, doors, roof color and masonry. And the location of utilities was not noted. So the condition to add HVAC behind the house or on a side beyond the midpoint of the house. And with those conditions, staff finds that the application meets section 2B for new construction of the Eastwood design guidelines.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions for Paul? Okay, is applicant here? I'd like to come forward and, oh, come forward and state your name and address.
Nathan Weinberg, 3944 Moss Rose Drive. I am one of the builders here. North by Northeast Development is going to be the, the developer on this project. We've done a previous structure in Eastwood Neighbors. We're excited to be working with the current owner of this property to develop something that will infill this lot in a positive way and impact the neighborhood in a positive way. I don't, I have not lived in this neighborhood, but my understanding of the lot as it sat before is that until its current ownership, it wasn't particularly well kept. That's hearsay. Our intention is to build something beautiful here, to adhere to the historical guidelines, to build something that enhances the neighborhood rather than detracts from it. We're sort of, we're even proposing going sort of a step further and coming off of neighboring houses and using sort of mixed media. So some brick materials as well, which I think you could see on the submittal. But we want to build something nice here. We are very appreciative of staff's recommendations. We've been through, I think, just two iterations to get to this. And I think that the, the, the goal of historic has been met through this design. I also think it's nice because it's going to leave quite a bit of green space, both in front and behind the house, which is something that's hard to do as we do urban infill in Nashville. So, thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Margaret Darby and I am here, excuse me, solely in my capacity as a neighbor at 1423 Greenwood. I live right across the street from this lot. And I'm also here to represent some neighbors who couldn't be here today because of, excuse me, the timing of the meeting. Like you heard earlier with the Germantown Overlay neighbors, the Eastwood neighbors spent a considerable amount of time and effort to garner neighborhood support for the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation overlay. So it is of the utmost concern to us that the design guidelines are adhered to by not only renovations, but new construction as well. When extreme variances are approved by this commission, it implies that the guidelines have no real meaning or import. So it's evident now that a new home will be constructed on this lot that I'm pretty sure has never had a building constructed on it. It does have a narrow front feature. The applicant was aware of this constraint prior to embarking on the purchase. It's worth pointing out that the Eastwood guidelines state historic zoning is applied in addition to base zoning. It is a more stringent layer of design scrutiny focusing on protection of the neighborhood's historic character as it relates to massing, scale, placement of the structure and the aesthetics. Here, the applicant is citing the odd shaped lot as a hardship and rather than make a proposal that knits together the unique site condition by providing a scale commensurate with the narrow front of the lot, the proposal asks for dramatic variances from the overlay guidelines. The constraints of a small frontage is not actually a hardship, but rather it's an economic concern for the developer. We are requesting that the commission reject this design plan in lieu of something that's more reasonable, that meets the guidelines and is consistent with the neighborhood character. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Kennedy. I live at 1432 Greenwood Avenue. Some points that the neighbors got together collectively, sort of coming off of Margaret's, just looking at the proposal when it was available, relative to front setbacks, the guidelines state, quote, "New construction should respect, not disrupt, the established pattern of rhythm of existing historic structures on the same and opposite sides of the street." There's no precedent for a structure set at an average of 40 feet behind immediate context. Relative to scale, the guidelines state, quote, "The size of new buildings and its mass shall be compatible by not contrasting greatly with the surrounding historic buildings." The applicant is citing a small site as a reason for needing a larger setback, but is proposing a structure with a footprint 30% larger than the immediate context. The height, relative to height, the guidelines encourage in italic print, heights of historic buildings be relative to immediate vicinity. The structure will be 12 feet taller than the immediate direct neighbor and 30% taller than the immediate context. With enassing, the, the applicant is proposing a wide structure, 42, 43 feet wide, which is typically reserved for historically significant structures or structures on lots wider than 60 feet. So we have a narrow lot asking for width increase. These points demonstrate variance from the guidelines as well as discrepancy of the hardship. The neighbors asked for a few questions that maybe the commission could discuss, which are, is the site constraint a hardship and how has the applicant demonstrated it? And what historically contributing structures were compared when comparing the width, 44 feet? And were there lot constraints or hardships in those locations? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any others? Okay, would you have any rebuttal? Anything you'd like to say on rebuttal?
Yeah, so when we started this, my initial scope was, you know, the lot is actually almost twice the width at the back of many of the lots nearby. Not all of them, but many of them. But obviously, at the front, it is a finger. And so that makes it very challenging. I'm going to say right now that I, I think that immediately coming out without having spoken to me or anybody else and saying that our application is reflective of economic concern is inaccurate. We make, we make design decisions based on a number of things. Square footage is one of them. But also, we take into account what the neighborhood looks like. And so initially, our thought was, we would like to keep the context with the neighborhoods, with the neighbors as it relates to the front of the structure. So that was our understanding, was that that was maybe the most important thing. I had a meeting with the councilman for this district. And he indicated that probably was not true. I showed him several options, one of which had sort of a finger of the house projecting out towards the front of the, towards Greenwood, that would have made the house be more in context. After meeting with Councilman Withers and our architects, it seemed more appropriate to create massing that from the street level, and actually further on in the packet, I believe that there's a sort of a street level view of this, would look more consistent with the, with the neighborhood than having something very narrow up front, but then expanded to the back. Rejecting something based on sort of an economic supposition doesn't seem particularly okay to me. However, we do want to be a conscientious builder and we want to build something in the neighborhood that the neighborhood can be proud of. You know, presently, there's nothing here. And so we'd like that to change in a positive way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Just looking at the site plan, it is a corner lot, basically, right?
No, it looks like one because there's two alleys. There's a side alley and a rear alley.
A side alley, okay. So really, if you, again, discussion, I mean, it, it's a challenging lot, period. And if you put the house located on the backside of it, then it, again, it's the rhythm and spacing of the other houses are also, you know, challenged from the rhythm and spacing of the adjacent properties.
Yeah, I agree that the narrowness might cause even more disruption to the, you know, the neighborhood continuity. You know, the, one of the neighbors brought up hardship, and I guess it's not, hardship is probably not the right word, but it's just like, you know,
is probably not the right word, but it's just like, you know, working with the site that's there and not, you know, being able to, you know, build something on it. And I, I think even regardless, you know, the tall, the thinness might have been even more disruptive. There's probably, maybe similar, there's probably not a lot similar, you know, because there's just not, you know, although we have these odd shapes kind of spread out in Nashville, this is a, seems to be a very unique situation.
Also, when you look at, on the page, that's nine of the handout, where it shows the front facades, and there's a view of it between the two houses, because it's setback, how many feet is it setback? Forty?
The front setback is 69.
Sixty-nine.
So it's 40 feet.
Gotcha.
Approximately 40 feet back from the neighboring setback.
Right. Then, you know, the massing would be, if that is an argument in terms of, or their comment to, you know, the massing of, to the, from, compared to the other houses, it is setback, so you're not seeing that massing on the front, front side of the, of the street.
Any more discussion?
Again, staff has worked hard on, on this, you know, on such a obscure kind of lot, so we do see these more often than not, and I do appreciate, I'm sure our commission appreciates the details that the staff goes through to give us recommendation. Thus, making the motion to approve per staff recommendation, 1430-B Greenwood Avenue in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Did everybody vote? Are you abstaining or voting? You abstaining? Okay. Everybody else voted? Okay. All right. Motion carries. 2618 Essex Avenue.
Okay. We're 2618 Essex Place, actually.
Oh, thank you.
It's okay. I think we had it incorrect somewhere. We also had it somewhere 2816. It is 2618 Essex Place. I just spoke with the applicant, and they have agreed to all our conditions, so I'm happy to whip through the presentation, or we can just have a vote, if you would like to do that.
Yes. If the applicant is fine with that, and I see a nod.
Just get you to our...
In essence of time, I guess I will make sure, open public hearing, to make sure there's no one that wants to speak regarding the project. Okay? Closed public hearing.
And I've got our conditions up.
Yeah. Does she need to read it in, or can we just go by staff report? Okay. If you'll read it in, then.
Sure. So we recommend approval of the proposed garage with the following conditions. The eve heights on the rear of the structure must be lowered to not exceed 10 feet, and staff shall approve the windows, doors, porch posts, and roofing color prior to purchase and installation.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you.
Or one of them. 4207, thank you, Jenny. 4207 Aberdeen Road.
Okay. 4207 Aberdeen Road is a circa 1945 cottage, which contributes to the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. This application is for a rear addition that's both shorter and narrower than the original house. Staff's only issue with the addition is its proximity to an existing garage. So just as a little bit of background, in 2016, the applicant received a staff permit for some interior renovations. That included an addition of windows to the rear elevation and a change in roof form to just a small portion of the roof. This work was approved but not undertaken, so this previously approved work is part of the current application. You can see in the left here what they had proposed, and on the right, that's our current condition, that work has not been done. But since the application, the permit has expired, so that work is also part of this application. As you can see in these side elevations, the addition is shorter than the existing house. The primary ridge height of these existing houses is approximately 22 feet 6 inches, while the highest roof line on the proposed addition is that side gabled portion, it's approximately 18 feet tall. The roof forms include the small portion of hipped roof that they're adding, which was previously approved, and those three sections of gabled roof. Staff finds the height and roof forms to all be appropriate. And also note on these sides how approximately 40% of the addition is an open screen porch. Okay, so in your floor plan, you can see that even at the widest point, the proposed addition is narrower than the existing house by approximately 10 feet. It steps backward, connects, and it remains beyond the plane of the original sidewalls for the full length. Here on the rear elevation, the hatched portion is that previously approved work. From this perspective, you can clearly see the addition is lower and narrower than the original house. Staff finds that the scale of the proposal is appropriate, given that lower height, narrower width, the broken-up massing, and the open nature of a large portion of the addition. So staff's one concern with the addition as proposed is the sighting. The addition as proposed is only 2 feet 8 inches from that existing garage. The guidelines require a 20-foot separation between outbuildings and primary structures. The commission has allowed exceptions in the past when there are limiting circumstances on the site. So let's look at this site. The site has several unique circumstances which do limit its buildable area. The width of the lot narrows from 60 feet at the street to just under 50 feet at the rear lot line. The lot is also shorter than many nearby lots. It's about 134 to 140 feet deep. It's different on one side than the other. Further, the garage sits 11 feet from the rear property line, which is 8 feet further into the buildable area than a garage would be required to sit today. So all of these factors combined limit the buildable area of this particular lot. So staff finds that due to these circumstances, a closer separation may be appropriate in this case. However, we feel that 2 feet 8 inches is too close. Staff recommends at least an 8-foot separation be established. That's actually the current distance from the corner of the den, which is that sort of orange-brown color in this graphic, to the garage. That distance could be obtained by moving the screen porch to the other side of the house, essentially flipping it with a terrace. The purple box represents where the screen porch could go. If it was moved to that location, it would bump just into that rear setback, which you see is angled because of the strange shape of the lot. Staff would support the porch extending up to 2 feet into that setback to get it further away from the garage. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed addition with the following conditions. The design shall be altered such that the addition sits at least 8 feet from the existing garage. Staff shall approve the windows and doors and the roofing color prior to purchase and installation, and the HVAC should be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. Any questions?
No, I don't think so. Thank you very much. Well, at least I don't have any, any questions for staff. Okay. Thank you, Jenny. The applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Can you pull it back to the site plan with your purple box? Oh, look. Oh, there it is. No, I would mess that up. My name's Van Pond. I'm the architect for the applicants for this project. Thanks to staff for working with us on this. Part of the challenge with this lot is there are multiple, very odd, invisible, what are they? Easements. Part of the reason the garage sits so far forward is there's an easement essentially at the back of the garage, across the entire back of the lot. It's a NES easement. We've managed to actually get the one that cuts diagonally across the lot removed, which is helpful, that we can actually build, even propose an addition. We understand staff's concern about the closeness of the screen porch to the garage. The owners, obviously because they're kind of restricted and things, one of the reasons that they, that we proposed placing that screen porch so close was to preserve a holistic sense of what backyard there was left. 8 feet is a lot to move into that and kind of create two shadowy courtyards. I think what we're seeing in this graphic is the garage separated by approximately 14 feet, if we move this, if we move the screen porch all the way to that, it's the farthest corner at the top of your slide. I'd like to ask the commission to consider requiring a 5-foot distance from the garage. This particular house, the overhangs are not deep, the garage overhangs are not deep. We're not going to create kind of a eve-to-eve condition, and kind of try to, try to toe the line between the two and preserve what the client wants, is, you know, a whole backyard in the back corner, if they can, as much as they can have. I'm glad to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Well, you answered one of the questions. I was going to ask you about that. So 5 feet is what you, right now, you're willing to compromise on. That would work, still work. Okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions for Van? Okay. Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Discussion?
And I would say, with that easement, I was wondering if there was some wiggle room to pull it in, especially since going all the way may have caused another, get into it as well, but... So what should you guys think about that? The 5 feet, I think, is, at least gets it off of it, makes a little bit more of a separation between it, but it does kind of help with, works with that easement that's back here at this line right here.
And the architect was saying that also the eaves are not, you know, very, very low in terms of they would be connecting to each other. That seems a reasonable construction.
So this is just graphic, but it might be a little bit like that.
They're also not solid walls.
Yeah.
For that construction. I would have a problem with that if it was, you know, wall, exterior wall.
I'll propose to adopt staff recommendation with the revision of the 8-foot setback, I mean, the 8-foot separation to 5.
Okay.
With, and, and giving the reason of the special condition that there isn't an NES easement in the back, and there's, difficult to achieve anything greater.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 405 Wilson Boulevard North. Make sure even when you vote, that you vote in the mic. I just, I don't want to miss somebody if you're planning to abstain or something.
All right. 405 Wilson Boulevard North is, this is an application to construct a new one-and-a-half-story house on a lot in the Cherokee Park neighborhood. There's currently a non-contributing house there that would be demolished. The house to be built has a cross-gabled form, approximately 27 feet tall and 40 feet wide, and this is compatible with the heights and widths of houses in the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding immediate context. The house will be shifted to one side of the lot with a driveway running along the right side, which would attach or leading to an attached garage at the rear of the house. The garage is side-facing. This is appropriate on this block because the historic context is similar. There's not an alley at the rear, and the lots are shorter than typical lots elsewhere. The side elevations, as you see, show that, like the front, the material will be primarily brick with cement fiber siding in certain sections like the gable fields. Window pattern, window shapes and sizes are fairly traditional in, in, in some respects, but they're in a contemporary arrangement. And staff finds it overall is compatible with the historic context because it is compatible and allows the house to be read as infill. There's an image of the rear, and these are historic houses on either side, and then actually, the top image, the house for this to the right, is the one that, non-contributing that will be demolished. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill at 405 Wilson Boulevard with the conditions that the foundation and floor height are consistent with adjacent historic houses, that samples of the stone and brick materials, as well as roof color. Paving materials are approved administratively, also that windows and doors are approved administratively, and that the HVAC unit shall be located on the rear or on the side facade beyond the midpoint of the house. Meeting those conditions, staff finds this application meets the guidelines for new construction in the Cherokee Park neighborhood.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. Do you agree with everything? Okay. So the applicant has stated he agrees with all the conditions. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing now closed public hearing. Have a motion?
I move to approve 405 North Wilson Boulevard, per staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Zero Peabody Street.
This project is for a new building at Zero Peabody, which is a historic landmark for the Bus Barns off of Hermitage Avenue. It's a little different than what you normally deal with because it's not infill design. It doesn't fit within an existing framework. It's just near the historic buildings. So we're not looking at some of the same things in terms of height and setbacks and so forth. It is oriented to Hermitage Avenue. As you can see from your packets, it's a very contemporary design. Staff found that it met the guidelines. So staff recommends approval with the conditions the design incorporates red brick, at least on the ground floor, and the applicant return to the commission with any requests for signage, lighting, and landscape features. Staff found the project to meet the design guidelines for new construction on a landmark site, and the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them.
Okay. Any questions for Robin? All right. Thanks, Robin. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case?
Thank you for your time this evening, and appreciate your service to our city very much. This is an exciting project. My name is William Hastings, 127 Third Avenue South, business address, and 812 Timber Lane, Nashville, home address. This is a project that's been in the media for, over the past couple of years, and so this was a competition that MDHA went through for site selection, for a developer to ultimately develop this site at Rolling Mill Hill. This is in the Rutledge Hill Redevelopment District as well, which is an MDHA redevelopment district, and this project has been heard by that committee and voted unanimously on the concept that you'll see this evening. I'm going to be brief because you've had a long time here already, and Robin has done a great job reviewing the project. The one matter that I would like to discuss is the condition of the red bricks. I think if I just focus my time on that topic, and then we'll leave, be available for any questions. The image that's up on the screen right now is the entrance from Hermitage. So you entered the site at Rolling Mill Hill, and there's about 20 feet of grade change between the intersection at Hermitage and Peabody and the low point of our site, and you can see it. It's, and the district energy plant is to our left, to the north of Peabody. And if you know, there's kind of a faux brick, red brick wall, and that is opposite our building. And then in the distance, you'll see the bus barns, as Robin has corrected me many times for calling them trolley barns, which I will never do again. Bus barns, and the horizontal nature of the bus barns, and the single-story nature of those buildings, and of course, the red brick and the fenestration on that. And, you know, the Department, Secretary of Interior Standards really says that each property shall be recognized as a record of its time, and not try to create a false sense of historical development. And so we do believe, we would like to use brick on the base of the building, as we're showing along the, along this particular facade, but we would like to use a contrasting brick, a dark gray brick, which is what is in our submittal to you, and was in our submittal to MDHA Design Review as well. And we feel like that will, will frame this street in a much more interesting way, rather than trying to mimic... trying to mimic, just as the DES building does, trying to mimic that time of, and really, we think in this view, which is really the primary view from both a pedestrian and a vehicular standpoint, you know, will diminish the impact of the, of the, of the bus barns. And, but on the site plan, one of our big parts of our submittal to the city, to the selection committee that ultimately selected our project, was this dedication and this, this scale, and we put all the scale on Hermitage and have basically no building facade along Lee. And Lee is the building, is the road that runs along the trolley barns, excuse me, bus barns. So the Entrepreneur Center and the ground floor, that single-story space is opposite what we're building is gonna be a park. So the only area where we have a single-story building that comes close to the bus barns is a retail area that we're paralleling Peabody with. And so the idea there was as the building, as our new building development gets close to the bus barns, we bring that scale down to a single-story building. So we respectfully ask for you to consider the, the statement of the approval with conditions of the red brick on the ground floor. We hopefully can get your support for the project as submitted without the requirement of red brick on the ground floor. But thank you, Robin and staff, for all your work. This is a big, complicated project, and to really be down to one topic, we were quite pleased and appreciate your time.
When you said red and gray brick, are we talking light gray or a dark gray?
A dark, a dark gray is what we submitted. Actually, Commissioner Nielsen, we actually have a sample of the brick that we're proposing.
Well, I even meant, do you have the renderings that are in our packet?
Yes. Yeah, can we pull that up? They should be in the.
Unless you have them.
Yeah, I actually do have them because it's on the, yes, if you hold on just one second, I do have them on a PDF. Yeah, that's, that's great. So that is the, okay, so just if we maybe go to the, can I control it from this?
Yeah.
Okay, do you mind if I do that? So this, of course, is the entry. This is the DES facade. Of course, we all know the bus barns. So this is the low point along Peabody where we're opposite the DES wall, Commissioner Nielsen. And so what we're proposing is along this wall that we would, where the pedestrian will interact, that we would have this dark gray, and we actually would have, the, the brick would, would move in this wall about a one-inch reveal so that the, the brick has some texture to it. What we're also proposing, if, if we want to look at it in the site plan, which was in our submittal, is that because the pedestrian experience is pretty miserable on Peabody because today the DES wall is just a few feet from the curb, and that wall's not moving because of the nature of the district energy plant, we have a fairly narrow sidewalk on our side of the street down at Peabody. What we're actually doing is creating a pedestrian promenade that's at grade. So a pedestrian will be able to, if you look at this rendering, a pedestrian will be able to enter this promenade, which is basically an elevated sidewalk, that will be at grade at Peabody and will, will be back at grade at Lee. So visually, when you enter this site, instead of going down 20 feet and back up to get to Lee, which is where the historic bus barns are, you'll be able to walk along this promenade and you'll be on access for those bus barns as soon as you enter the site. So this is the wall where we've proposed utilization of brick. We also do have to come back to this commission for landscape plan, and we are intending to integrate brick into the site walls, and Kim Hawkins and her firm are doing some great work for us, that we will be back to you on the design of the park, which will be directly adjacent to the bus barns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. William, when you talk about that you're doing brick on the, the park-like areas, are you talking the gray brick or the red brick?
The gray brick is our, is our hope.
So you're gonna continue with the gray?
That's our plan, but we still have certainly flexibility there, and I think we have discussed that that might be a great way to bring in some of that language if we wanted to bring color, maybe a deeper red or something in the courtyard area. I think that's definitely something we would be receptive to if the commissioners thought that was important.
Okay.
Maybe that question would be to staff is, and again, it says recommendation that it incorporates red brick, didn't specify 100% red brick, but what would be the reason for that?
The reason for it was based on the historic and new construction in the area that is primarily brick, red brick.
Okay. Go ahead. To the applicant?
Yes. Was there a consideration for the red brick along the, the bottom where you said that it would kind of be the staggered?
Yeah. We did look at it. We looked at it in about every tone of red that we could think of, and what we were really fearful of is we're gonna end up with a third color red brick on the site because the DES doesn't match the bus barns. So we were really worried it's gonna look contrived and be this kind of patchwork of, of reds that are, you know, not consistent with one another, and that wall is an 18-foot wall that is opposite this wall, and, and it is what it is. It's gonna be that for a long time, so.
In that, in that rendering, how high is that wall?
That wall's about 15 feet, I believe, and to the, to the top of the wall. I may be wrong. It's 15, 16, it's in that, in that range, so it's very similar with the same height as the DES wall.
Okay.
So we did look at it, and we just didn't feel it was gonna be successful at the end of the day.
Got it. And I do have one more question on the, I don't know what it's called, but on the entrance, it looks like there's wood. Is that right above, on that far right, is that?
Yeah, the, so on the, on that end, the product that we've proposed there is called, it's like, it's E-Pay, and so I don't know if you've seen the Thompson Hotel in the Gulch.
Yeah.
So the two-story, that's a project that we designed, and so the two-story portion of that massing that really is relating to the 404 into Station Inn into Watermark, that really brings the scale down at the intersection.
Right.
That material on that second, first and second floor is that same E-Pay, it's just a different color.
Okay. Got it. I was just looking at that, I'm sorry, for like, oh, maybe a wood tone or a red, not brick, but a cedar color? Would you consider that if you wanted to bring in some of the other earthier tones throughout the neighborhood?
Yeah, you know, I think what hopefully will happen with this project is the retail's gonna be widely, you know, just successful, and, you know, retail has a tendency to take on a vibe of its own over time, and so if we were to integrate some other materials or colors, we certainly would come back to you for those. We're trying to give ourselves a palette that's neutral but compatible with the neighborhood at this point. We also are trying to use the overall building, the massing of the nine-story building. If you look at the components of that building, we're really, very intentionally have made the overall architecture of that very horizontal rather than vertical to help bring the mass down, and also to be more kind of these little small, the idea with these little single-story boxes that you see are a bunch of small trolley barns in a modern interpretation is our kind of our concept.
I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not approving all the building materials at this time, but they'll come back to us with the building materials?
Yes, I mean, our recommendation is to approve what has been proposed.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, William. Did I open public hearing? If I didn't open public hearing, anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, closed public hearing. I think I do, you know, especially listening to it, I think I would be concerned about too many bricks there, but I like the idea of maybe incorporating it into the, somewhere in the courtyard. I think that, that does give a little bit, just because, you know, of that, you know, that red, really orangey brick, if you don't saw it, that is kind of problematic, but.
Yeah.
Anybody else wanna add to that or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation about incorporating the gray, very gray brick versus the red.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, 816 Fatherland Street.
Yeah, this is a little different. All right. Okay. So first, you did receive some public comment via email, and there were several comments on your table prior to the meeting, so just make you aware. All right, so this is a request to construct a new single-family residence at 816 Fatherland Street. The existing house on the lot, which is seen here, was constructed circa 1967 and does not contribute to the character of the edge-filled neighborhood. Staff recommends a condition that the non-contributing structure either be demolished or relocated prior to issuance of the preservation permit for infill. So the site plan before you, the plan before you meets the design guidelines for height, scale, setbacks, and rhythm of spacing, materials, and roof shape, but does not meet the design guidelines for proportion and rhythm of openings and orientation. As proposed, the infill is oriented to Fatherland Street with parking from an existing curb cut to the right of the proposed infill. So while neither the width nor the depth of the driveway will change according to the plans that we received at the, at the time this was written, the proposed infill is, is wider and deeper than the existing non-contributing house, which means the driveway will stop just past the front of the proposed infill, which, so the, the plan on the left is the existing residence with the driveway highlighted in red, and on the right is the proposed residence with that same driveway highlighted in red. So vehicular access for infill is generally required to be taken from an alley if, if an alley is available. However, an existing curb cut may be used as long as the driveway extends to the rear of the house, which helps to discourage parking in, in front of the, in front of the house. So per the plan, the existing driveway extends to the rear. In this case, staff doesn't recommend that the existing driveway be extended to the rear of the infill, as that would require the width of the building to be reduced, which would likely result in an inappropriate width for the infill given the historic context. Also, the rise in grade, so the site rises significantly from the front to the rear of the, the lot, would make it difficult to continue the driveway to the back of the house. Therefore, staff recommends that vehicular access be located off the alley. So photos here show that, that the majority of homes on this block face do not incorporate driveways, so that the photo to, on the top is to the left of the proposed infill, and on the bottom, that's properties to the right of the infill. So as proposed, the project does not meet Section 3B2E for orientation, but staff finds that the project could meet this guideline with the condition that access be from, located off the alley and the existing curb cut be removed. So the structure, as proposed, is one-and-a-half stories, and will have a maximum height of 26 feet with an eave height of 12 feet, both measured from grade at the front. The height is similar to historic homes in the neighborhood. The primary cladding is hardy plank siding with a cedar shick accent. Most of the windows are generally twice as tall as they are wide, which meets the proportion of windows as seen historically. However, there are two windows that, sorry, Melissa, there are two windows that don't meet these proportions. The first is this round window outlined here in red. While there are examples of similar windows, meaning not rectangular, in the district, such windows are generally found on styles and forms from the Victorian era and most often located in the gable fields. The primary style influence on this building is a craftsman style on a bungalow form. Although buildings can incorporate features from different styles, the Secretary of Interior Standards do not allow for the addition of conjectural features, which can create a false sense of history. Staff finds that, that since there are no other references to the previous area, era of architecture here, the windows are a conjectural detail. So staff would recommend that this round window either be removed or replaced with windows that reflect the historic proportion and rhythm of openings. So here's the left side elevation. The other window that staff found to not meet the design guidelines is this small square window, and it's located near the, the front of the house. Staff recommends that the window be removed or possibly replaced with a solar tube, so this window is, it looks like per the floor plan, located above a bathtub. So if the goal is to, to get lighting in there, a solar tube could accomplish that. All right, but, but as proposed, it does not meet the design guidelines for the, the historic proportion of windows. And here are the right, this is the right elevation, and the rear. And context photos, so the photo on the left is 812, which is next door to the, to the right. It's a contributing building. The photo on the right is 817 Fatherland Street, which is across the street, and then 810, Fatherland is on the left, so that's two doors down to the right, and 820, which is also contributing. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The existing non-contributing house must be demolished or relocated prior to issuance of a preservation permit for infill. Two, the finished floor height shall be consistent with finished floor heights of adjacent historic houses, to be verified by MHCC staff infill. Three, the round window shall either be removed or replaced with windows that reflect the historic proportion and rhythm of window openings. Four, the square window on the left side shall be removed or replaced with a solar tube. Five, vehicular access shall be located off the rear alley only, and the existing curb cuts shall be removed. Six, staff approve the doors, roof color trim, porch steps, porch posts, and porch railings prior to purchase and installation. And seven, the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side of the house beyond the midpoint.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case and name and address?
My name is Susan Hager. I'm the architect on this project. My address is 1205 RD Avenue. As Melissa said, the main difficulty on this lot has been the slope, and we have some, some complicating circumstances, I suppose, but on this lot, and, and I've done some diagrams recently, we, we can't access the house from the alley, essentially, because there is such a great slope on the lot. And our main complicating circumstance is that the client has physical disabilities. So essentially, she needs to be able to park at the door of the house. And I looked at, you know, worst-case scenario, let's put a parking pad next to the back porch, let's call that her entry point. And to be able to do that, it would take a driveway with a 26% slope to get from the alley down to the back porch. And, you know, I, I did a lot of research on, is that even feasible? I talked to landscape architects, and generally, a 12% slope is the maximum recommended. 16 is like the maximum acceptable. So 26 is just out there, you know, that's, it's too much. So we would, we would request that we get to keep our front drive and parking situation as it is. We have designed the house such that should she need to add a ramp in the future, because, you know, they're, they're retired and she does have physical disabilities, that will only get worse. So right now, you know, she, she can climb the steps, the five steps to the front porch, and, you know, that's a lot for her, but she agreed, all right, that's about the maximum I can do, but we have designed for a ramp should she need it to the side entrance from that parking spot in the front. So it's not exactly in the front, it's next to the front porch, you know, we're, we're not parking in front of the house, it's beside, but as Melissa said, it doesn't extend to the back. So there are, I think, 17 houses with curb cuts and front driveways on this street, 104 houses on the street. So, you know, 16% of the houses have the drive in the front, and like we said, we, we do have an existing drive in the front, so. So, and we're sad to see our front round window go, but if it has to go, sorry, Steve.
Okay. So your only thing is the driveway?
The main thing is the driveway, yes. Yes.
All right. Any questions to the applicant and comments?
Well, I live across the alley to the back.
Oh.
And it is very steep.
It is very steep.
And it gets steeper from one end to the, I mean, it gets steeper toward the middle.
Okay.
And I can certainly, I can understand even without a disability, that it would be very difficult. There are part, there is a parking pad, I think, to the left of it, but there are steps that go down.
Right.
And a lot of the steps go down.
Okay.
Yes.
I certainly know exactly what they're talking about.
Yes. We've also had several neighbors write letters in support. Our councilman, Councilman Withers, wrote a letter in support. Our homeowners association president wrote a letter in support, so.
All right. Thanks.
I think we can discuss all those things. So that's just reality.
All right. Well, thanks, Susan. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Yeah, I'm, since it's there, I don't have a big objection to it. Do you want to make a motion, Anne? Or does anyone else make discussion? Since you live behind it.
Well, I would act out my recommendation to adopt staff recommendation with the exception of five and allow the vehicular access from, to retain in front.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. 808 Shelby Avenue.
Now that it's passed, I can say I live across the street from that one, too.
He is a co-.
Right in front of the house. I digress. 808 Shelby Avenue, there is currently a non-contributing building shown here, which looks like a foundation only, without a house or a bunker of sorts. But it's non-contributing, and it is to be demolished and replaced with a new duplex. The site, oh, no. Okay. Sorry, there was just a blank slide. I thought we lost power. So it's proposed to be replaced with a new duplex. Before getting into the design of the building itself, the site plan submitted shows proposing a front setback much deeper than the adjacent buildings. Turns out that was sort of a mistaken assumption by the surveyor that there was a minimum setback for the street, which charts say that there might be, but not in a historic established neighborhood. We certainly would want the building to be pushed forward to align with adjacent historic buildings. So staff recommends that, that the building would be moved forward. On the design, the building will be 30 feet tall and 38 feet wide. We've had some other infill applications on Shelby recently, so I know we've discussed a scale in this area a lot. And while this is certainly on the upper end of the range of widths of buildings, the height is very typical of the area, which has a lot of other one and a half-story houses. And that 38-foot width actually does match a historic house on this block at the end at 800 Shelby. So staff finds the height and scale to be appropriate. On side elevations, you see that the scale of the building really is one and a half-story and even drops to a single-story at the rear. The materials to be used are common and appropriate for infill, including split face block, concrete block foundation, cement fiber siding, asphalt shingle roof materials, other materials like the windows and doors would need to be approved administratively. There's the rear elevation, shows a Borden-Batten siding on a rear dormer. Here are some houses in the immediate vicinity. The 38-foot wide house is the bottom image far to the right. One issue staff had with the design is the scale of the dormers on the front. Historically, dormers are proportional to the bays of first-story windows and doors below. Staff found that these were too wide and recommended that they be reduced by, that each dormer is reduced by two feet in width to be more compatible with the first story. That's it. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill at 808 Shelby Avenue with the following conditions. That the foundation and floor height is compatible with surrounding houses, historic houses. That the front setback shall be decreased to match the setbacks of surrounding historic buildings. That the front dormers are reduced by two feet in width. That window and door selections, that roof color, paving materials are approved by staff. And that HVAC units are located on the rear of the building or on the sides behind the midpoint. With those conditions met, staff finds this application meets the guidelines for the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Sean, I have a question. The two houses on either side, what is there, are they contributing or non?
806 is contributing. 810 is non-contributing.
It's which side? Left or right? We're looking at the bottom.
So the bottom image is...
I think there's one more. Go back one more.
806 is an apartment.
Are we looking at the, are we looking at the property in question right in the second, the second picture below?
802 for, okay. So the bottom is 800 to the far right with a large dormer that's been added. 802 is the one-story. 804 is contributing one story. And then, as the gentleman said, 806 is a non-contributing immediately to the right. I guess I can go back to...
Look at the one, that, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Yeah. And the one to the left is new construction. So both of those are non-contributing.
Both are non-contributing. Okay. Thank you. That was the question.
But the one to the left there, which I guess would be 810, was approved by this commission at some point in the past. I believe more than 10 years ago, though.
My view is just to see which one was contributing in terms of how this new infill is going to relate to a historic structure. That's the question intent. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your case? Please give your name and address.
My name is Jeff Checo. I live at 1133 Warrior Drive in Franklin. I am prospective developer and builder of the property. My architect has been handling a lot of, all the communications, really, so pardon me if any of this is, should be rhetorical, I don't know. The front door, I don't know if you can go to that picture. I just had a question about that. Maybe, hopefully, it's an appropriate time to ask. It looks like they're three-quarter lit front doors. With that being on a fairly active street, maybe some concerns with having a direct view right into the house at all times. And maybe homeowners would probably use a window treatment there anyway. Would there be any consideration for like a quarter-lit or even half-lit door there? Was there a reason for that?
Well, I believe one of the conditions was staff approval of, or administrative review of windows and doors, yeah, window and door selections to be approved by staff.
So that could still be like a dynamic situation?
Yes. This architect, like most architects, sort of often puts in just a placeholder in the design, because those things change.
Great.
Yeah. So we can...
That wasn't my understanding, so thank you. That's awesome.
You don't have to use those exact doors.
Great. And then lastly, with the dormers, that does have an impact, of course, on the size of the front bedrooms. And what struck me is your comment that it needed to be more in line with the size of the windows below, which makes a lot of sense. Obviously, there's a door there to deal with, but would you be open to the dormers being wider if the windows became wider? Or were the windows below already determined to be at like an appropriate width?
Well, it's sort of, you know, I don't want to have, you could change one thing, and then it sort of chases other, you know, triggers other changes down the line. I guess I'd certainly be open to seeing how that would look in the drawing.
Well, and that's for the commission to decide. That's what they do.
Okay. Yeah. Pardon me, it's my first time through, so I don't want to like be speaking out of turn. But I just have kind of been along for the ride a little bit, you know? So if that's something that you'd be open to, I don't know if that kind of puts me a step back. I certainly don't want to do that.
I think, well, it would be a change. I'd hate to say yes or no, or that I'd be supportive of not of a change that I haven't seen. Because like I said, if you change one thing, it can trigger another change down the line, and then it's hard to envision all the implications.
So could that be like evaluated at staff level, anyway?
This, again, is for the commission to decide, where staff aren't decision-makers.
Okay.
So our recommendation is that they be narrowed, and now it's up to them to deliberate and discuss and decide.
Okay. Well, thanks. So you understood what I was...
Why don't you state that one more time, though, what you're asking for?
So the dormers, one of the conditions for approval was to narrow them by two feet, which negatively impacts the size of the bedrooms, well, by two feet, that the dormers are associated with. So my question was, if the windows below, where you see kind of a, there's a, looks like a 3050 window, and there may be a 60, and then there's two more narrow windows on the side of them, perhaps that could widen that window profile to accomplish a wider dormer above? If they're, because they mentioned that the reason for that was looking for some type of symbiotic relationship between the windows below and the dormer. So by maintaining that and making them a little wider, could I get a wider dormer?
And then, Chris, that is based on those lowered windows being in appropriate proportion and shape. And so we thought what was proposed is, but if you get those wider, then those are no longer appropriate.
Yeah, that's, and that's something I'm not aware of, yeah.
So it's not really just making windows wider so the dormer gets wider.
So if they were wider, you're saying that they would be no longer inappropriate width on the lower? That makes sense. Okay. That's all I really have.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant?
Just, you're okay with a setback recommendation?
I'm thrilled with it, really. There's alley access, and the farther towards the street I can get, the better and more practically usable yard space in the rear, you know? So I think that's great.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll go as far forward as they'd let me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Come forward. State your name and address.
My name is Steve Burt, and I own two lots, 816-18 Shelby. So just three houses down. And I fully support this proposal. I think it's a great design. One is it eliminates probably the least attractive home in the entire Edgefield Historical Zoning District. So that alone is a positive. A second one is I think it really fits in well, not only within the block, but within the entire overlay. And then third, and I think it was, Amenei, is it? Minay? Minay? Your question was, I thought, really apropos. 806 is a non-contributing property. It's a large apartment structure, two levels. Mostly ground level is showing, and then there's a lower level that's not as visible from the ground. But I think the design really transitions that non-conforming property into the remaining conforming homes on the rest of the block. So I think it's a great design, and I fully support it.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other public hearing, closed public hearing, discussion?
I'll move to adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I will say, I do understand the part about the, what those rooms turn out to be, but getting two feet smaller does make it pretty tight. But like staff has said, it could be a ripple effect about the proportion, but I definitely recommend, understand it. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. So since the training is off, I will just also point out that there is a blue and green list of all the administrative permits that you are encouraged to review. Are there any on there, Robin, that you want us to bring to any attention more than others?
No, thank you.
Okay. And seeing none, any other announcements? Okay. Meeting adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.